Good afternoon. It's my pleasure and honor to call to order the Tuesday, October 3rd, 4:00 PM, meeting of the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors. We will start our meeting, as we always do, with an invocation, and we are pleased to have Pastor Dave Nelson from Smyrna Baptist. And following that, we will, Vice Chair of Orders, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Okay. Let's pray. Our Father God, we thank you for this Board of Supervisors and their priority to begin with prayer. We're not unaware, Lord, that these days are days when standards that had been accepted down through the ages have been tossed to the wind. But we are one group here that does not wish to do that. Therefore, we pray that you would grant wisdom and understanding for these who work in here to make plans and to be able to resolve any issues that arise. Help this time to be one where decisions are made equitably for the people, for families and businesses to prosper. This we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Pastor. During my first campaign, I had the pleasure of standing in front of Smyrna Church with my sign several mornings as the sun came up, and it's probably the most beautiful spot in Goochlin County, but I am biased because it is my district. All right. Thank you very much. All right. We are going to start off. The next agenda item is a proclamation recognizing October of 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Whereas domestic violence is a pattern of abusive and coercive behaviors used by one individual intended to exert power and control over another individual in the context of an intimate or family relationship. And whereas abusive behaviors may include, but are not limited to, physical assaults, verbal assaults, threats, intimidation, emotional abuse, use of weapons, destruction of property, violence towards other people or pets, sexual violence, and control over economic resources. And whereas domestic violence is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in Goochlin County, whether a victim, survivor, a family member, significant other, neighbor, employer, or coworker of a victim, survivor. And whereas no one person, organization, agency, or community can eliminate domestic violence on their own, we must work together to educate our entire population about what can be done to prevent such violence, support victim survivors and their families, and increase support for agencies providing services to those community members. And whereas Goochlin Cares, a comprehensive domestic violence program, provided 118 survivors of domestic violence in 2022 by providing 24-hour hotline services, facilitating safety plans, providing shelter services, offering support and information, providing case management and counseling, advocating for victim survivors seeking protective orders, empowering survivors to chart their own course for healing, and facilitating educational trainings and prevention programs. And whereas ending domestic violence in Goochlin County involves active collaboration between Goochlin Cares, Goochlin Commonwealth Attorney's Office, Goochlin County Sheriff's Office, Goochlin Victim Witness Program, the 16th District Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court Services Unit, Goochlin Department of Social Services, and other regional partners. Now, therefore, we, the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Goochlin County.
Board, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this resolution.
Thank you, Ms. Lesklet.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So I'm Heather Salmon. I am the Case Management Coordinator with Goochlin Cares. I was the Sexual Domestic Violence Program Coordinator. We now have those two advocate and coordinator positions open. We're hiring, so it's Tavon, who's our Emergency Housing Coordinator, and myself. We're running the program, and she's doing a great job, keeping me sane. So I did bring some purple tablets with our hotline number and all our services, and we're just very thankful to Goochlin County, all of our partners, Sheriff's Office, Courts, and just everyone. We're thankful. So, thank you for having us, and now we have to go back to the office. Yeah.
Thank you. I remember I was on Goochlin Cares Board when Sally presented the board with the taking up of the domestic violence program. They'd already been working on 12 significant campaigns or projects. We just didn't understand, the board didn't know if taking on something additional was going to be wise, and she, you know, as Sally does, convinced us. And it's one of those things that they were overwhelmed as soon as they started, which is a terrible thing, and you wouldn't think it would happen in our county, but it's just, we're just so blessed to have resources like that available for people. Okay. Now, moving on to my comments, just one real quick one. Tomorrow evening at 6:00 in this room, we will have our special meeting to review the Centerville Small Area Plan, and that is open to the public. Also, this board does have a, we do strive for transparency in all we do. Last month, a citizen came and lodged a complaint against the board, and I would like our county attorney to talk about her findings regarding that complaint. Ms. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As this board well knows, and anyone else can read on the display on the back wall there, the Board's Code of Ethics establishes a process for handling of any ethical complaints. And under that process, as county attorney, I am charged with reviewing the complaint to determine if it's a valid complaint. And there are two steps to that validity under the process. It's to be from a Goochlin resident, as well as alleged conduct that could constitute a violation of the Code of Ethics or the standards of conduct. So I reviewed the complaint. It was made against four board members and claimed a violation of paragraph two of the Code of Ethics. And that paragraph is to put loyalty to the highest moral principles and to the county as a whole above loyalty to individuals, districts, or particular groups. The complaint identified three types of conduct alleged to be a violation of that ethical requirement, personal financial support to the campaign of a school board candidate, supporting the Goochlin County Republican Committee regarding donations to a school board candidate's campaign, and a resolution in support of a school board member. And the third category was other campaign support activities, which simply included some social media posts and a campaign event. My determination is that there is not a valid violation of the Board's Code of Ethics. It is a fundamental part of our government at the federal, local, and state level. The persons who are elected campaigning for office may be members of a political party. They can actively support their political party and other candidates, both financially and through other support activities. Accordingly, election to the Board of Supervisors and the adoption of that Code of Ethics does not deprive the Boards of Supervisors members of their fundamental right to engage in these political activities. My determination of invalidity and these reasons was included in a memorandum that I sent to the board members and to the complainant on September 22nd, just a few weeks ago. And under the procedures established under the Code of Ethics, no further action should be taken.
Thank you, Ms. McGee. Okay. That concludes my comments. Now, time for our county administrator comments.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I just have three items to remind you of. This is a busy month. October is a great month and a great county of Goochlin. Coming up, however, on Monday, the 9th, we will be celebrating federal holiday, Columbus Day. So county offices will be closed, the convenience centers will be open. Fire Fest is coming up on the 14th, which is a great event. Encourage all citizens to come out and participate. And then a great event, Roswell's Fall Festival Weekend will be on the third weekend of October. So a busy month. Ask everyone to enjoy the things that make Goochlin such an amazing place. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Board, are there any requests to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in the order of presentation? Okay. Seeing none, we will move into the citizen comment period. This is a chance for citizens to come and address the board issues regarding Goochlin County that are not on our agenda today. So if you could come, please give us your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Thank you. And this time, I will open the citizen comment period.
Good afternoon. Linda Moore, 2164 Prophet Road, Manneken, Sabbath, Virginia. Members of the Goochlin Board of Supervisor, Mr. Carpenter, as you probably know, I live off of Manneken Road. There is 10 communities that are along there. We are all hardworking, loving, great neighbors, and right now, we are trying to come to terms with the Centerville Small Area Plan. I am thankful that I just received the information packed of our feedback. I am tremendously proud of my neighbors for getting, stepping up and getting the 225 forms filled out. It was not an easy task for most of them. Most of them are 65-plus and do not have the skills to get through this process. I do hope that we will take what we learned from this process and move forward. This has been tremendous. The amount of bad vibes or negativity is probably, my husband will say, I am more of a cheerleader than a fighter, you know, and I love every one of y'all. It's agapi love, of course, but, you know, we all need to put ourselves in the place of a community who feels like they're under the gun and their being, their way of life is being challenged. And understand, we all, many of us have moved to Goochlin because we love the rural character. Every morning, I get up and thank the Lord for living in Goochlin County. You heard last month from my neighbors who came out to support me, and I'm just tremendously grateful for this report because I am, the number one through nine represents the issues that we had, and thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
How y'all doing? I'm still Mike Schlega, 580 Villa Ponte Lane, over by the edge of the county. And I just wanted to briefly talk about some of my experiences working hard for people like you, not necessarily you yourselves, but as I will mention, okay, you guys administer certain election decisions, including decisions for the Dave Owens/Suzanna Gibson election, where you have one set of regulations in your county and the other county has a different set. In particular, I go door-to-door knocking, which a lot of politicians do with both parties, but it's extremely hard to tell people who live 20 miles away to come down here and early vote. And I've knocked on many doors, and it's extremely rare somebody says, oh, yeah, I'm going to make that trip. On the other hand, if I go do the same activity in the next county, okay, they have multiple early voting sites, okay? Everybody up there lives basically within five miles of the early voting site, and it's, yeah, a lot easier to turn people out through that method. If you look at the numbers, and I'm going to point to some numbers from Hanover County, Courthouse Precinct, 354 early voters for every 10,000 voters or whatever it may have been. If you go to the edge of the county, okay, it's 100. Okay? So again, when people live further away, they're much, much less likely to early vote, 3.54 to 1 in that one particular area. And again, I think you see the similar numbers here if you look at them. Certainly, there are a lot of factors coming into play. You know, if you live out there in District 1, you're far away, but you have to come to Goochlin and basically shop. If you're over by Short Pump, most people over in Short Pump area, in the Tucko area where I live, over by West Creek, will never come here, except for politics, at least for me, because there's no reason. We have every service we can need over there. But ultimately, at the end of the day, I implore you to have an equal voting system for all candidates in both sides of the county line. I know that's difficult because ultimately, the state legislator said it's a free-for-all. You can have 20 early voting sites in one county, one in the one next to you, and you can't make it equal because nobody's equal. But I encourage you to do what you can to make it equal. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Schlega.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. John Thelaw, 1521 Manneken Road, Chairman of the Monican Soil and Water Conservation District, and Goochlin Farm Bureau Director. My comments are my own. It's been a busy month for agriculture this past month and even the first part of October. Goochlin Farm Bureau had its annual dinner on the 18th. Mr. Carpenter joined us, left well-fed. He had a smile, so we appreciate Mr. Carpenter showing up and, not just showing up, but actually participating. At our meeting, Hayes Gottwald, who is the proprietor of HG Meats, gave us a status report on his new activity, the new agricultural business he's bringing to the county. I appreciated Mr. Carpenter being there because Mr. Gottwald shared some of his experiences and what he was going through so far as permitting and just what he needed to do to bring a new business to Goochlin. So I think that Mr. Carpenter was illuminated as some of us also. We're also having, we also had Mr. Chuck Metzger from Greenswell join us, and he was invited to spend a couple of minutes bringing us up to date on what Greenswell is doing. They're looking to expand, which is great. They have a challenge in that every week, they turn out about 25,000 pounds of peat roots and stems as a byproduct, and I appreciate the county is participating and working to find a solution. I believe there was a meeting here just last week with NRCS, with the CTE folks, and perhaps, I'm not sure, some of the folks from county staff as to how we can take that byproduct and maybe actually make it something that is a revenue line on his P and L and also benefits the county. Virginia State Fair just completed a 10-day run. It was a really good year. We didn't have as much rain as typically. The old saying is, if you want rain, have the state fair. We had up to 50,000 people participate this last Saturday. So agriculture is something on the horizon. It's not just all the Midway. I will mention that Nicole Schuman, who was recently one of our agricultural extension agents, was one of 15 superstar cards, not quite a Pokémon card, but it showed some of the superstars out there in the ag community. I will make a shameless plug for Farm Bureau membership. If you're not a member, it's 40 bucks a year. You save 10 bucks on your ticket to the state fair, so it almost pays for itself. Monican Conservation continues to work with folks. We have already about $900,000 in cost-share applications, but that means we still have a million left. So we're working hard to see how we might get some of this cost-share money out into the ag community because as the TMDL and the Bay Act activities loom closer and closer, all of these activities are going to help us come in compliance. I will also just finish up by mentioning Lee Randolph, who was a chef at Dover Hall, is up for Chef of the Year awards with the Virginia, the VRTL, Virginia Restaurant, Lodging, Tourism Association. So October 10th, we're going to have those awards. I know that Chad Hornic and Jeff Ottiano are going to be down there, joining me at the dinner, so we may have Chef of the Year right here in Goochlin County. And I'll come back at 6:00 and talk about well-water testing, so.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Anyone else wish to speak for a citizen comment?
Good afternoon, Board. Mr. Chairman, I just want to make a comment about the public comment period that occurred in the last meeting in September. Yeah, September, the 6:00 meeting, when we walked in, there were rules posted on the wall. I've been here for 23 years, and never have I been to a meeting of this board and boards before this where the rules were posted on the wall. I commented to the board at 4:00, and at quarter to 6:00, we got rules up. So some of the concerns that were shared was that this is part of you all's manual. Well, the manual that you have, either you're using it or you're not. Today, we don't have rules posted on the wall like we did. The other thing is that the public should have been given a notice that there were changes in the rules, and that didn't happen because I was here till 5:00, and we came at quarter to 6:00, and, you know, the rules may not have changed, but they hadn't been displayed before. The other concern is that there are some people who are nervous speaking before this board and other boards like you, and one of the rules that brought a concern for me was that you're saying no one can read anyone else's statement. And I think the concern is that there are people who are not proficient in English, there are people who are disabled, there are people who may not be able to speak at all, and are we taking their freedom away from them to communicate with this board? And so I just wanted to come and ask for that one statement to be reviewed, if that is part of the rules, that you rethink that one because that removes people opportunities to share their concerns with you all, and it may be that they need someone to read their statement. I think the primary function is to get a statement to you guys to consider, and if they don't have that opportunity because of rules that are set, then we need to rethink those rules. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hobbs. Anyone else for citizen comment? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to close the citizen comment period. All right, Board, next item is the approval of our minutes from the September 5th Transportation Work Session and our regular meeting on September 5th. They have been in your packet. Hopefully, you've got a chance to review them, and I would be happy to entertain a motion. Mr. President?
I move that the Board approve both sets of minutes for September 5th, 2023.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lesklet. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. All right, now, we will move into our reports. Our first up is our partners at VDOT. Mr. Wynn?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Marshall Wynn with VDOT. I'm sure you all got the maintenance report. Didn't know if you all had any questions about it. I do have a couple of things I do want to bring up before you ask any questions, if you don't mind.
Please do.
Yeah, well.
As long as it's good news.
A third cycle of primary mowing will start the end of the month. I just wanted to let you know that. We are going to cut the primaries one more time. We're diligently working on our hired equipment contracts. Hope to have all those in place by the first week in November for snow removal, and we're starting our dry runs for air equipment next week, so we'll be ready for snow when it comes. Other than that, if you have any questions about the maintenance report, please let me know.
Thank you. I did want to thank you for, we have had several citizens reaching out about the mowing of the roundabout and keeping that brand-new structure looking good and was taken care of right away after I reached out to you, so I appreciate that.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Do we know how long until it's?
We're waiting on that DI and that pipe processing to be done by the contract before the construction is closed.
Okay.
And once that's done, I had a discussion with Austin earlier prior to this meeting. I'm going to reach out to our area construction engineer to see when that may happen because I know, you know, Goochlin is concerned, and they want to enter into a permit to take care of that circle and everything, to beautify it and that sort of thing, so.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you. All right. Thank you so much for coming out.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right. Next, we have Chief, I see Chief Ferguson for our fire and rescue report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Eddie Ferguson, Fire Rescue Chief. Certainly, the report has been provided and in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I'd like to highlight a couple of things, if you would allow me to, please. October the 8th through the 14th is National Fire Prevention Week. This year's theme for National Fire Prevention Week is Cooking Safety Starts With You. Pay attention to fire prevention. According to NFPA, cooking is the leading cause of home fires, and nearly half of all home fires involve cooking equipment. Cooking is also the leading cause of home fire injuries, and unattended cooking is the leading cause of home cooking fires and related deaths. And a few things that we can look at to do to prevent those fires, if you're cooking something that has a long cooking time, then use a timer so that you don't forget what you have on the stove, and clear the cooking area of any type of combustibles, anything that could burn, such as dish towels, towels, mitts, or paper towels, anything that would be combustible. And certainly, turn your pot handles so that you don't run the risk of bumping into them or a small child pulling them over. Turn them towards the back of the stove. And if you do have a grease fire, just simply remain calm and have a lid there so that you can just slide it over the pan to snuff the fire while it's still small. Creating a kid safe in a pet-free zone, at least three feet around any type of cooking, is a good practice just to keep everyone safe. You'll see us out in the community during the month of October, particularly doing fire public education programs. We had a couple on the calendar today at some of the local schools, and we'll do our best to educate the public on fire safety and promote the NFPA's theme. And to that point, on Saturday evening, October the 14th, we're having our second annual Fire Rescue Show in the back parking lot of Goochlin High School. Starts at 5:00, and we advertise it from 5:00 to 9:00, but honestly, it'll be well-done by 9:00, and maybe, maybe we'll be, you know, done a little bit sooner for the parents who have small children who can come out and see the show. The Fire Rescue Show is a longstanding tradition in the department that we brought back last year, and this is, we'll call it our second annual, although we had many of these shows back in the '70s and '80s and early '90s. I'll tell you that this is an evening of family fun demonstrations, a chance for folks to come out, bring their children, interact with the fire and rescue personnel for demonstrations, exhibits. We have food trucks. We expect in the Med Flight 1 helicopter to land on the football field, as well as, at the very end of the show, we have a very small fireworks show for the crowd there and attendants. It's a great way to celebrate Fire Prevention Week, as well as promote public safety and all sorts of displays that support all types of public safety, as well as recruitment and retention of fire and rescue members. The other thing, I'd just like to thank everyone for attending our 9/11 ceremonies that were held on Monday, September the 11th. As an emergency management announcement, I would like to remind everyone, if you haven't seen it or heard about it, tomorrow, October the 4th, at 2:20 in the afternoon, there is a national I-Pause emergency alert test, and this is basically a test of the, that goes across the cell phones and the radio and television, national test of the Integrated Public Alert Warning System, about 2:20 PM tomorrow afternoon. And I just wanted to mention that this is separate from Goochlin's Code Red system. Citizens can sign up for emergency alert messages from the locality by signing up for Code Red, but this is something that's being done in conjunction with FEMA and the FCC that covers cell phones and radio and television stations. So I just wanted to mention that, so folks could be expecting it. Certainly, every time we speak, we always make mention that we are always open for volunteer applications. We need more volunteers, and as of yesterday, we reopened our career hiring process to address three unexpected vacancies that have occurred since our last meeting. It lasts only, but at least, if anyone needs a It lasts only, but at least if anyone needs a free smoke alarm, we are happy to provide those. Just give us a call at our office, 804-556-5304, and we'll send a crew right out to install it. Or if a citizen would like to pick up the free smoke detector and install it themselves and that's, that's perfectly fine. And with that, I'll certainly answer any questions you may have about the report that's in your packet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. The only thing, Chief, I'll bring up from a personal experience, last year with the fire prevention, we had not used our gas fireplace for quite a while.
Right.
And getting it lit, we had the pilot going, but we could still smell gas and hadn't had serviced in like 10 years, those lines can sometimes get brittle in those couplings. So we ended up getting a detector and actually had them come out and fix it.
And that's a good, great idea and a good thing that you just brought up. If you do have gas appliances in the home, certainly it's a great idea to have them serviced on a regular basis, having a detector in place that would detect levels of gas, whether it be propane or natural gas, as well as carbon monoxide. You know, when we burn fossil fuels and certainly carbon monoxide is a coalless, odorless gas that can be very toxic. And so that, I appreciate you bringing that up. Sometimes we respond out to homes for the smell of gas and it could be what you described where there's a problem with the fireplace or in other cases, sometimes the propane cylinder will be empty and you'll get low line pressure and that will actually give you the smell of propane. And propane really has no smell other than the mercaptan that's put into it so that you can smell it. But certainly, certainly something to be aware of. Thank you, Mr. Spooner for bringing that up.
Thank you. All right, Chief, thanks for all you and your team do.
Thank you very much. Certainly an honor to be the fire chief and be a part of the great team. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next we're going to have our introduction to new county staff and we are going to have a pitch hitter. I think Mr. Carpenter is going to step in for Ms. Sutton who's struggling with her voice with the changing of the season. So, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This month, I'd please announce, we have eight new hires that are going to be introducing to you. If you're present in the room, we would appreciate your standing so we can recognize you. On August 1st, Ben Ellis joined the Planning Department as Planner One. He'll be providing professional planning services, land use planning, preservation planning, zoning administration, and the monitoring, review, and evaluation of land use development proposal designs. Mr. Ellis has held positions as a Research Assistant, Land Use Planner, and most recently served as Development Manager for St. James Episcopal Church. We have with us a John Michael Whalen, joined the Planning Department on August 16th as Plans Reviewer. He will perform technical planning duties involving considerable public contact, office research, field investigation, and reviewing of applications and plans. Mr. Whalen comes to Goochin County from Levana County where he served as a planner and GIS technician. Fire and Rescue welcome firefighter recruit Brian Adams on September the 1st. As a recruit, he will learn the basic tenants of fire suppression, emergency medical, and other emergency services while attending the Fire Training Academy. Upon successful completion of the academy, he'll be reclassified to firefighter. Also, September 1st, James Jones, Jones IT Department, as a GIS analyst. In this role, he will perform technical duties in the development and maintenance of the county's GIS system. Mr. Jones most recently worked for Leidos as a GIS analyst, Leidar processor. On September 1st, Ryland Dabey joins Park and Rec as a groundskeeper. In this role, he will maintain the county's parks and public spaces. He most recently worked for Burke Dell Golf Course as a golf course superintendent. Kyle Willis joined Parks and Recreation as a Recreation Coordinator on September 18th. In this position, he will coordinate the development, implementation, and evaluation of targeted department programming and marketing. Mr. Willis has held various recreation positions such as a Certified Therapeutic Recreation Specialist and a Health and PE teacher. Jessica White joined General Services on September 18th as a custodian. She will provide routine care, cleaning, and sanitation of buildings and grounds. Ms. White previously worked for the VA Correctional Center for Women as a correctional officer. As part of her role, she ensured the facility was clean and sanitized properly. And lastly, on September 27th, Abigail Cordova joined Animal Protection as a part-time shelter attendant. She'll be responsible for ensuring the cleanliness of facilities, feeding, and managing the well-being of kennelled animals. She has previous experience working with animal care as an aquatic specialist at Pet Cove. Members of the Board, please join us in welcoming our new staff.
Congratulations and welcome to the family. All right, Board, the next two reports are in for your review for planning and development activity and then the council table. Up next, we do have our October 3 broadband report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Paul Drumright, Community Affairs Manager. So the October 3 broadband report is in your packet, but there is some highlights I'd like to make from some of that information. And I also have a couple pieces of information that has come in after the report was submitted. So some new information to share with you as well. One of the things, just to kind of reframe or frame where we are talking about broadband is we have one major or project we're going on right now with Firefly Fiber Broadband, but that project has multiple different phases through multiple different funding sources and using multiple different partner providers and contractors working on that. So that project moves at different phases or moving at different speeds. And so it is a complex project. For everybody else, it really looks as one big project, but there are those different components that are moving forward. Some of those that are moving forward and something I'd like to highlight is the Rappahannock Electric Cooperative Service Territory, the area east of Oilville, which had been, they started connections of that and did a town hall back in the spring. That area is now considered to be in service. That doesn't mean everybody has been connected yet. There are still people waiting to be connected, but in Firefly, in Rappahannock Electric Co-op's minds, it is now a in-service area, so anybody can call and get service there. The west part of Oilville, so west of Oilville up towards the Gum Spring area, that is still showing to be connected as of starting in the fall of 2023. So they haven't announced a town hall meeting for that yet, but once they do, we will show that information. We will host that just like we did for the other town hall and the citizens can expect to start seeing connections. Again, I would remind, even though it says connection's starting at a time, they're going to continue till they go through their list of everybody who signed up for interest in it. So if you're on that list, you may not be the first one to get it. Be patient, they're coming, they're going to go through every single body, you know, who signed up and they're going to do those connections. Moving on to our RISE project, which is working with Dominion Energy. It had been reported in the report in the past, so they've wrapped up their middle mile fiber that Dominion Energy is building down in the Three Square Rock Castle Road area. They're still waiting on to do the fiber splicing with Firefly on that, but they've already moved up and started doing the work up in the Haytensville Fife area and doing connections there. And some new information, as of September 27th, they've completed 13 miles of the 28 miles of middle mile fiber in that area. They are expected to be completing that fiber build in the next couple of months. And so then they will move on to the next section, the Columbia area, so of lower western Goochlin. And then they're going to be wrapping up on the Crozier area, which splits both Crozier as well as then west of the Courthouse area. They're projecting to finish all of their middle mile fiber build by the first quarter of 2024. That is a slight change to what they had been shooting for, which was the end of 2023. But as we know with a complex project, things happen, it takes a lot more time once you get in there and start working. So they're projecting to finish all their middle mile fiber build by the first quarter of 2024. So that, as they wrap up their fiber build, they start to turn it over and Firefly starts to build their last mile connections in those areas. So that's some new information there. They've completed again up in the Haytensville area, 13 of 28 miles of fiber. Moving on to the USDA Reconnect area, we do have some unfortunate news. So a communication did go out and this is some new information, it's not in the report. A communication went out last week and should be, individuals in that area should be receiving it. If you don't, let me know because I want to make sure. So if you hear of somebody who doesn't get it, we want to make sure that they do get that. They have had to push that where it was projected a fall 2023. They've pushed it for a number of reasons. One of those reasons is they're continuing to look to try to find a fiber hut location to help fund as part of that project. And so right now they're showing, they say, summer 2024. That would put it kind of in line with a lot of the other projects, so a lot of the other projects are going to be around sometime in the 2024 territory. I would remind, Firefly, according to their grant with the state, has till the summer of 2025 to wrap up all the projects. They're still right now on track to beat that here in Goochlin. But so that, if a customer calls up Firefly today and asks, what's the status of a project? If Firefly hasn't put out a identified timeframe, they're going to get that answer of summer 2025. Not to be alarmed, until they put a timeframe, a more concrete timeframe to it, that's the answer that they're going to give. So we continue to work with Firefly to identify locations and to try to find, help them in any way we can to locate a fiber hut either on county property or on private property and support them in that effort. And we will continue to do so because we understand that broadband is a critical important need for our community and we want everybody to have it as fast as they can have it.
Thank you, Mr. Drumright.
With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Working questions. Ms. Laskett?
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Drumright. So when Firefly sends a letter to, not to an individual, but to a group of people in the county, is there a way that the county can be notified? Because where are the folks that are going to get the phone calls? So is there a way to get them to just, you know, if it even came to Mr. Carpenter and then he can disseminate it out, or you, or whatever, doesn't matter? Can we arrange that?
I'm going to talk with my partners at Firefly. They have in the past kept us in the loop on stuff, though there may be, in this case, a rush to get it out and they didn't get it to us. And so going to make sure that we reiterate that we'd like to know so that we can at least be aware.
Exactly.
At the forefront. So I try to also check on that information and where they normally would post it at least once a week. And so we'll keep an eye on that, but also work with them to try to get a better notification process going.
And, Mr. Trump, if you don't mind, I have another, one other question, well, actually another question. Like you just passed on to Firefly, they are working near my area and the subcontractor, actually, it's not Firefly, it's the subcontractor for Dominion that's doing the middle mile, they have been amazing. They're so respectful of people's property, letting people know what they're doing at all times. They really do it, they're doing a great job. So if you could pass that on to folks.
I certainly will.
Hurry up.
It.
Can they do it faster?
And that's what we want, want to hear, is that we want to hear that the contractors that are out there are working, but they're also doing it in a respectful manner because everybody wants this, but at the same time, we don't want a mess or have a lot more headaches coming from this whole process. So, and that's where I would say, if we do start to hear that, I want to know so I can make sure we pass on both the good and the bad to our provider partners in this whole complex project.
Yeah, and so far, everybody's so interested in getting it, just, I don't know if they could do too much wrong at this point, but they really are doing a great job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Laskett. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Drumright.
Thank you.
Okay, Board, now we are on the point of the agenda. We're happy to hear from any of us that are serving on other boards.
TPO was off, so I think we'll have a report next, next month.
Mr. Waters, any plan to do?
Not too much from CVTA. We're sort of moving into the doing of the work now, so it's pretty much normalizing. Although I will say, as I mentioned in the last meeting, Mayor Stony was, is Chair of the CVTA and there seems to be a significant desire in order to borrow money for projects. We've been PEGO so far up until now and there's an RFP, I think that we approved, to go out for bonding groups. There's a, there's a sort of a, there's two camps. One camp believes, you know, it's PEGOs, more reasonable. Others are, hey, for us to get these larger projects, we're going to have to borrow some money and do some bonds. So that will work its way through the body. So any thoughts the Board would have, please share with me and as well as citizens. So, thanks. Any else from this side?
All right, well, Mr. Carpenter, you got some stuff to talk about.
Yes, I do. We've got 11 items tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, on our consent agenda. So without further ado, let me start. Item number 5828, with authorization for the county administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding with Goochlin Pet Lovers. The MOU calls for review by both parties every two years to allow for updates or addition to the terms. This year, slight changes were made to the MOU, but the changes are acceptable to shelter staff. Staff recommends authorizing the county administrator to execute the new memorandum of understanding, which confirms and memorializes the county's relationship with Goochin Pet Lovers. The county attorney has approved the MOU as the legal form. Item 5827, resolution supporting a transportation alternatives application to VDOT for the Courthouse Village Sidewalk Project. The sidewalk project will provide approximately 2,500 feet of sidewalk along Route 6 to Goochin Courthouse. This sidewalk will connect Reed Marsh Drive to Goochin Cares. This project is Phase 1 of a larger Courthouse Village connectivity goal that was laid out in the recently adopted Courthouse Village Small Area Plan portion of the comprehensive plan. The Transportation Alternatives Program provides an opportunity to share project costs with the state. The state will commit to a maximum of 80% of the project, while locality must commit the other 20%. Item 5825, resolution supporting a revenue sharing application to Virginia Department of Transportation for the I-64 to Oilville Interchange Project. This project will provide much-needed relief to congestion at the westbound I-64 off-ramp experiences in the evening peak hours. The project will construct a single-lane roundabout at the top of the off-ramp for westbound I-64. This project was awarded $4 million through the 2023 Community Project Funding Grant to the U.S. House Appropriation Committee. As part of that grant, Goochin County was required to commit a $1 million match for a total of $5 million allocated to the project. The Revenue Share Program of VDOT provides an opportunity to share unfunded project costs 50/50 with the state. At an estimated total cost of $7.7 million, the county's obligation for the unfunded project cost is the current project funding, the $5 million Revenue Share Application, $2,719,685 state match, $1,359,843 local match. $1,359,843 funds do not have to be allocated at this time. The appropriation of funds will require future Board action, however. Item number 5824, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2024 Goochin County budget by transferring and appropriating $167,557 from the Central Virginia Transportation Authority Fund to the Capital Improvement Fund for the Smart Scale Round 6 Application Assistance. As part of the upcoming Smart Scale Round 6 Application Cycle, staff contracted with Rinker Design Associates, RDA, to provide analysis and preliminary engineering to support our applications. Goochin County has afforded five pre-application slots and four full application slots through the Smart Scale. The following projects will be submitted for pre-application review. Ashen Road widening from I-64 to the limits of the Project Rocky Project, Route 288 southbound auxiliary lane, Route 288 southbound hard shoulder running lane, Route 288 West Broad Street improvements. RDA will also review our transportation priorities and provide recommendations for future Smart Scale applications. Staff recommends using CVTA local funds to cover the costs of this application assistance. Our total current balance of the CVTA local funds is $5,917,280. The next item is 5839, resolution amending the fiscal year 2024 Goochin County budget by budgeting and appropriating $750,000 in the County Capital Projects Fund and $150,000 in the General Fund. The Board has requested to appropriate $750,000 to the Capital Projects Fund for security cameras around the Courthouse Square and $150,000 to the General Fund for a variety of strategic plans studied. Strategic Plan Study, a capital impact. strategic plan study, a capital impact model study, and a third-party IT review. All of these new projects will be funded with the past year fiscal year '23 general fund balance. I'll also be coming back to the board to request an appropriation of funds from fund balance to purchase a fire truck currently listed in the fiscal year '25 CIP. Doing so will result in a significant decrease in time for delivery and cost of equipment. That'll be at a later date. The next item, item 5818, is a resolution requesting Virginia Department of Transportation accept Mosaic Section 1 subdivision streets into the secondary system of state highways for maintenance. The construction of roads is complete. VDOT notified the county that these streets are ready to be accepted into the system for maintenance following the adoption of the following resolution. The boards that are requested would be Mosaic Nook, Fresco Court, and Mosaic Boulevard, and all total equal approximately 6/10 of a mile. The next item, 5822, resolution requesting VDOT accept the Mosaic Section 4A subdivision streets into the secondary system of the state highways for maintenance. Again, those roads are complete. It's a total of one road, Talavera Terrace, for a quarter of a mile in distance. The next item, number 8, 5834, resolution to refer to the Planning Commission for public hearing and amendment to the subdivision ordinance relating to subdivision plat requirements. The board is requested to refer to the Planning Commission this proposed ordinance related to subdivision requirements. The proposed amendment to the subdivision ordinance is requested to improve accuracy of final plats provided to the county for recording in the county's official land records kept by the Circuit Court Clerk, to improve the county GIS system's partial accuracy, and bring the tentative plat process into compliance with state law. Among other things, the amendment would require that GPS coordinates be provided for a minimum of four points on a final subdivision plat for major subdivisions. In addition, the proposal would clarify certain information to be provided on plats, which is consistent with current practice and industry standards. GPS coordinates would generally not be required for vacation plats, family splits, or certain minor subdivisions. Moreover, the proposed amendment does not impact surveys for private real estate transfers. The next item in front of you would be number 9, 5838, request to initiate and refer to Planning Commission an amendment to the zoning and subdivision ordinance related to access management and road standards. The proposed ordinance amendment is intended to improve the access management ordinance provisions, address the fire department's safety concerns about subdivision roads, and improve subdivision road standards. The proposal changes to both the zoning and the subdivision ordinance. Within the zoning ordinance, the amendment would, among other things, update road standards for new subdivisions to reduce the need for fire lane signs. It would also align the ordinances and the major thoroughfare plan, road classifications. It would revise access management standards to match VDOT standards and update commercial drives to meet fire code access requirements. The proposed ordinance will clarify how the ultimate right-of-way is determined in order to reduce the impact of future road widening on buildings and parking. In addition, the changes would improve road pavement standards and include a standard for a no-lot frontage spine road in large developments of 200 or more units. For the subdivision ordinance, the amendment would, among other things, update the road requirements to ensure that minor subdivisions of fewer than five lot, those roads meet fire access requirements, develop private alley standards for townhouses and cluster development, and require curb and gutter for major subdivisions developed with small lots. Additionally, the amendment would require public road maintenance for all major subdivisions, but the Board of Supervisors could grant exceptions to this requirement, typically during rezoning. Item 10, 5826, request to set a public hearing for November 1st, 2023, to consider an ordinance to amend the Goochin County Code, Section 2-26, the official electoral map defined, to update the official electoral map with Precinct 301, the Beaver Dam's new polling place at the Parks and Rec Building next to the county complex. The Board of Supervisors adopted an ordinance on July 3rd, 2023, changing the polling place for Precinct 301, Beaver Dam, from the Goochin County Animal Shelter, which is located at 1,900 Hidden Rock Lane to the Parks and Recreation Building at the county complex, located at 1,800 Sandy Hook Road. The Attorney General's Office approved the change on August 10th, 2023. This action will update the official electoral map to reflect new polling place location. Item 11, 5836, request to set public hearing for November 1st, 2023, to consider a lease agreement with the Central Virginia Blacksmith Guild for county-owned property at the Central High Cultural and Educational Complex. This lease agreement is for the prior middle school cafeteria preparation space, with approximately 1,700 square feet. The CVBG wishes to continue its engagement in activities such as foraging and educational programming. The agreement is for a two-year initial term with automatic two-year renewal. It includes an annual rental fee of $6,000, as well as other lease requirements. The CVBG's use aligns with the vision and business plan for the Central High Complex and arguments other initiatives on-site, including the Cultural Arts Center, the Agricultural Center, and other on-site programming and public uses. The agreement has been approved by the county attorney's office as a legal form. And that, Mr. Chairman, is our report.
All right, take a breath. All right, board, thank you very much. I'm going to take some liberties here. Since we have so many items, usually, I would now ask for a motion to add, to remove, or take them as a group. I thought it would be best, maybe, if we open it up for questions at this time to see if you had any questions about individual items before, you know, making determinations. So, at this time, I will entertain questions that I will promptly send to Mr. Carpenter.
You looking to me for, okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, I do have a question on the Oilville Road Interchange Project. And as typical, this is probably some education or edification for me. What we see on our report is, project was awarded $4 million through a grant through the U.S. House Appropriations Committee. As part of that grant, we are required to commit a $1 million match. So, that means $5 million allocated to the project. Put "allocated" in quotes, because then we'll come back to that. We have not appropriated the million dollars yet, correct?
That is correct. It's been earmarked internally, but nothing's been officially appropriated.
Okay, so, since you, now, you used earmarked. So, I've got allocated earmarked. I'm used to assigned, unassigned, assigned, and appropriated. So, all right, so we got the $1 million. $1 million to get the $4 million. Now, it was awarded in a grant, but obviously, that grant is an award that's saying, if you get the project otherwise funded, right? So, the grant, the grant is not a commitment from the federal government. It's just saying.
No, it's on.
It's on.
So, that grant, if for some reason we weren't successful getting revenue share funds or other dollars to complete the project, that would expire in 2026.
Okay, that was my next question, expired in 20, so we know the money's good until?
October of '26.
Okay, so if we meet the requirements to fund it, as otherwise required by the grant, we're good.
Those funds have to be obligated between now and October of '26, which part of that project, and while we're pursuing money now, is that that obligation timeline requirement's also going to fast-track the project through VDOT.
All right, so just again, just, I think, so we're really clear. Now, you used the word obligated. Funds need to be obligated. Does that mean appropriated?
Yes.
Committed.
Committed.
Yes.
Okay, y'all are so.
Obligated and appropriated, yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, appropriated. The money needs to be appropriated. I'm not sure that that's accurate.
So, the money is not being appropriated at this time. If you recall, we did a previous.
By 2026.
Yes, sir. The money will need to be officially identified as a line item and have the funds readily available to disperse in the budget.
But could that be assigned?
Yes.
But you're asking us today not to assign. The bottom line says, I move that the board adopt, adopt, amend, and deny for this resolution supporting an application for the Oilville Road Interchange Project. So, you're just saying, you're getting bored saying, go apply.
Yes, this is an effort to seek consensus and support to seek that additional funding that's needed through a revenue share application.
So, I guess I'm trying to, and again, this is maybe just semantics, but I think it's kind of important, is dynamic and as fluid as transportation is, and the things are always moving.
It moves.
Funding is always moving and things. I guess it seems to me that this is going beyond just go apply. It is kind of a consensus that this board is ready to find $1 million plus another $1.3 million.
That is correct, Mr. Lumpkins. VDOT requires a resolution of support to accompany any VDOT funding program application at the pre-application stage. One, that helps with ensuring that the governing body is aware of a project moving forward, and two, that what their portion of a local match may be. So that should the project become funded, the locality is essentially saying, if we choose to move forward with it, we are aware that this would be our commitment. You always have the option, should it get funded, to return the funds, or fully fund yourself, variety of options.
And I get it, but I guess I'm just thinking, we say, we kind of get a sense that, I guess internally and from our finance side, it would be good for, if we adopt this, for the next board, or the, you know, this board, when we're thinking next months ahead, that we see where this money is planned to come from in our finances. So, if we're not allocating or appropriating, and I know we don't need to appropriate now, but is an assignment of the funds going to, and that's maybe a question more towards finance and Mr. Carpenter, but is an assignment of these funds going to come shortly after this resolution?
I believe that one of our goals with the new budget development as we start FY '25's budget is to actually go ahead and work to program those dollars or have them identified. And we are beginning budget preparations as we speak. We actually received the email from our finance director yesterday.
Okay, yeah.
Two million, there will be $2 million in the signed fund balance request coming right after this.
That really kind of takes care of my concern because this is more than just an application. I think we're starting the ball rolling on what I think is a commitment to fund something. And citizens in this board ought to know what we're looking at, whether it comes from general funds or CVTA funds. That's still open, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. Ms. Laskett?
Okay, so I don't go anywhere. So, I had questions on items 2 and 3 as well. Mr. Lumpkins covered number 3. Number 2, much smaller project sidewalks.
Yes.
It's an 80/20 split. Again, there's no money associated with this, so what are we talking about here?
So, the total, the reason why there's no dollars, much like item 3, there's no dollars on the resolution information is the estimate was unknown at the time. It was still in flux and under review with VDOT. The current estimates end at around $1.6 million for the entire project. That's engineering, right-of-way considerations, and construction. So, the math works out to be approximately $3,000 to $350,000 on our 20% requirement. But again, that's not allocated at this time. That's just making the board aware that we will be on the hook for that 20% requirement moving forward.
Again, it's the same scenario. So, we're applying for it. We don't know how it's going to be funded.
Correct. So, once the, if we were to be successful through the application, we have the opportunity to accept the funds, and then we're required at that point to allocate and go through formal board action to appropriate those funds. Or if the project's fully awarded through the Transportation Alternatives Program, the board can also say, we're not willing to fund this project, and the funds just expire. So, that's still, there's still board discretion to be had on both projects.
And just hop on here. I also thought that we had talked about potential for local funds to be able to be used as a last case, that we would potentially have those available if need be, the CVTA local.
Correct, that is correct. And I would just like to reiterate, so with the VDOT funding cycle, while it seems that we're getting our resolution of support and acknowledging that we understand there's local match, there is not a decision made on funding until June of FY of 2024. So, we will have gone through our actual budgeting exercise. It's just the way that their application cycle sinks. The pre-application's due in October. Full application is due in mid-spring. So, it just doesn't align cleanly with locality budgeting when you're starting to do a budget.
Right, and as I'm starting to think about rolling off this board, it's a concern of mine to put things in place that bind a future, and I guess really can't. But we're putting things in place that they're going to have to make decisions on, I guess, on this, so. All right, thank you.
Correct, and I will say, if funds are awarded for any of the project applications we have identified today, there's always a project agreement that is entered into at the time that funds are awarded. So, there is the chance at that time that a future board can make a decision as to how they want to handle that project agreement. So, this is not binding in perpetuity.
Austin, we talked about this earlier, but I think it's important for citizens to know because they're, we're going to see this project, and they're going to see, wow, there's like 40 more yards that we could have just finished this thing. So, I think people have heard about the complexities of getting funds from different buckets and different requirements. So, Austin, could you tell us a little bit about why we're not just doing the whole sidewalk?
So, the Transportation Alternatives Program, a little background on it, is federally funded. So, with federal dollars come federal requirements and obligations. So, that adds a whole nother layer of complexity into the project in and of itself. The sidewalk projects, obviously, all new sidewalk has to meet ADA requirements and so on. The problem becomes, as soon as we touch existing sidewalk, if we're planning on utilizing that to what's called a logical termini, a sidewalk has to go from a logical point A to a logical point B. It can't just be sidewalk that goes down to nothing. If we were to touch existing sidewalk, that sidewalk's got to get replaced if it doesn't meet standards. And the sidewalk in the courthouse has some suspect areas, if we're being honest. So, we made the decision that Phase 1, again, this is only the first phase of the connectivity goal, the small area plan, is to infill what's a current gap of the sidewalk infrastructure. And then we'll work on sort of fixing some of the areas that we know are probably not ADA compliant.
Thank you. And just as somebody that hopes I'll be sitting here next year, I would say that I appreciate the fact that the board is looking for alternatives, and we didn't miss a year of funding possibilities. Because that'd be like, what did you do? Okay, all right, thank you very much. I'm ready to entertain a motion, if somebody's willing to make it. Mr. Lumpkins?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Supervisors approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, consent agenda carries, thank you. All right, yeah, I believe we got one more thing, which is the, so the back page, fund budget, fund balance assignments. Ms. Cave?
I think Lisa's going to bring that up. But, yeah, Carla Cave, Finance Director, and I'm up here this afternoon to do a final review and approval of the fiscal year '23 fund balance assignments. Yep. Dan will bring it up. And as he's bringing this up, this is our second and final review. This was brought to you with preliminary numbers in August. And the purpose of today's motion is to officially approve these assigned uses, and the designations will be laid out in our ACFER, our Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. So, I've got the PDF up here, but we had our auditors in all last week, and they finished up Friday afternoon. So, these are fairly up-to-date figures. They will probably change slightly. But we are bringing in a general fund surplus of about $9.9 million. And we have to take that $57.5 million that we'll end with in our general fund and designate how much we want to keep as unassigned, which means we can use on anything operational going forward, anything you choose to. And some of that money is non-spendable, such as our prepaid, our inventory. Some of it is restricted, which means it's legally bound for certain uses. A portion of it is committed, which is, our board is designating it specifically for this one purpose formally, and that is our revenue stabilization reserve. And then the rest, we put in buckets called Assigned Fund Balance, which is what Mr. Lumpkins was talking about. So, we reviewed this in pretty good detail in August, but I just wanted to point out, some of the largest changes from fiscal year '22 to '23 are, we have placed a lot more, about $11 million more in capital improvement funding. So, we know we have some huge projects coming up. So, we're going to take basically the entire surplus from fiscal year '23 and hold that for future capital projects. What's going to be remaining for unassigned is keeping us right at our 25% target. So, that's right where we want to be with our policies. And we have right at $3.25 million for our revenue stabilization reserve. and that's also right at our 3% target where we want to be. I will recommend that you approve this motion as amended because it does include a capital project that we had talked about earlier, that we have chosen to ask for funding at a later date, which is Station Eight temporary, it's a million dollars for a temporary Station Eight. We're, we don't own the land yet, so we're going to choose to defer that at a later month. But that is written into the motion that you have, so we're going to pull that out if you could approve this as amended. And if anyone has any questions on anything else, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Ms. Cave. Mr. Peterson.
Yes, thank you for that presentation. Appreciate that. Sounds like we had another solid year. I see this, these numbers up here, and I also have the board packet here, and I don't know if we can pull those two out, but it was really the one thing I wanted to talk about between the two and try and reconcile the two. And it's a bullet point that says we've increased the assignment for future CIP, future capex projects, and the board package says from eight million to 8.4 million. And when I look at these numbers, the future CIP projects.
Yep. That's because in your board packet, I'm comparing what was presented in August to what's presented now. And up here, you're comparing fiscal year '22 pots to fiscal year '23 pots.
Two different comparisons.
And that 8.4 million would really be 9.4 million now that we're getting rid of that million dollars. If you look at this PDF up here, you'll see that we're assigning $10 million to future capital projects. And I'm pulling only $600,000 out. Originally, when we had to submit this into our MinuteTrack documentation, we were also including another million dollars. So that would be where your 9.4 million is coming through.
Okay, good. Well, the reconciliation, those are two different time periods we're looking at.
Yes.
Which answers the question. So, boy, I mean, this is all part of our closing of the books in preparation for the final report to the state with our annual budget or our annual audit. So we, as you, as we all know, in June 30th is a cutoff, but tax revenues and payments dribble in a couple of days late, a couple of weeks late, and we're permitted in our state law to post those to our books and records within a certain amount of time after that. So the books aren't really closed on June 30th. It takes quite, a little bit of time afterwards, bring the auditors in, close up, make sure all, everything, the numbers are all accurate as well. So this is one of our final true-up periods. So November is, by November 30th, end of November is when the audit is due to the state. In the past, we had to have a special meeting in November to approve the audit so it would be delivered on time on November 30th, and they've changed state law, I believe. So we're able to approve the audit results at our December meeting and not have a special meeting in November. So that's, that's the good news on that front. So these are those kind of final true-up numbers, or at least near-final true-up numbers.
They're very near-final, yes.
Very, 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 very near-final true-up numbers.
They could be final, we'll see.
In preparation for the November preparation of the final audit, which would be then approved on the first week of December. Did I get that close?
You did, perfect.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, you did answer my question and reconcile the numbers, so I appreciate that. And like I said, we've had another solid year, so that's good. And then our next report for the quarterly results for FY24, the one we're currently in, which is a different year than this, would be presented at the December meeting as well?
November.
At the November meeting.
Actually, possibly we moved it to December. Okay. We'll have it ready in November, but we're going to officially give it in December.
That wasn't meant to be a trick question.
Yeah.
Because I think under our policies, we're required to report back the quarterly numbers each quarter to this board so that we can keep track of things. So that is going to be November, December-ish?
I think it's going to be December 5th. Lisa knows, she's on top of it.
December 5th, okay.
Yep.
Well, that's why on our calendar and our adjournments, it doesn't mention a public meeting next month in November before the board meeting. Okay, that answers all my questions. I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Ms. Laskett.
Okay, so Ms. Cave, we just, a few minutes ago, approved $750,000 for cameras in the courthouse area, $750 in the capital, well, we amended the budget, fiscal year '24 budget.
Yes.
$750 for the capital project fund and $150 in the general fund. And that we just approved. And I see we have a $600,000 here that we are assigning. Is that in addition to the $750?
No, that is a piece of the $750. If you see above, it's four rows down on this PDF on the screen, there's $150,000 sitting, and it has been sitting for several years.
Gotcha.
Funds specifically for the sheriff's use. So we're going to combine those to total the $750. Yep.
That's what I thought. Thank you very much.
I just kind of want to comment on that. We've learned through this that these, this new system is going to be purchased in preparation for the new courthouse. So we won't have to go out and buy all, I mean, we may have to get some equipment, but there's going to be thought to make, getting ready for and not having to, having to rebuy everything. Okay? Any other questions? Mr. Vardis? Okay. All right.
I move that the Goochlin County Board of Supervisors approve as amended the June 30th, 2023 fund balance assignments.
Thank you, Mr. Vardis.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most curious. Thank you very much. All right, well, thank you, everyone. Good, good session. And we will recess now till our 6:00 PM meeting.
Good evening, everybody. It is my honor to call back to order the October 3rd meeting of the Board of Supervisors. We have our public hearings this evening. We have three on the agenda. Before we do that, we will move into our citizen comment period. This is a time for citizens to address the board on matters pertaining to Goochlin County that are not on our agenda this evening. If you'd come to the microphone, please give your name and address, and please try to limit your comments to three minutes. I will open the citizen comment period.
I'll try to do this in two. After the Centerville Plan is dead, it's critical.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Stephen Shorrock, 12201 Bremner Ridge Circle. We need a realistic road plan that can accommodate the full build-out of Centerville, one that reserves and preserves the rights of way for future growth. Neither the 2035 plan nor the latest Centerville Plan maps show anything close to being adequate to deal with the population growth that's coming. The years-old master thoroughfare plan needs to be updated. We must plan now. Roads can be built as two-lane roads, but we have to preserve the rights of way. It'll be too late to modify roads when development builds right up to the edge of the current narrow country roads. It'll be impossible cost-wise to acquire the rights of way on land with new buildings. We will be evaluating the patchwork of development after development. Developers will submit traffic studies showing the impact of one project at a time, not the cumulative impact. By identifying real road needs that accompany development projects, the public can see the real impact and the cost of the projects. We will have well-designed, attractive buildings, beautiful landscaping, and we'll have the time to admire them as we sit in bumper-to-bumper traffic. After the 2035 Centerville Plan is dead, it's critical that you tackle the transportation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schreit.
My name is Patricia Handy and I live at Wheatland Drive in Mannakin Sabbath. I haven't prepared any remarks, but I have something I want to say. I've lived here a long time, and I want the people who are stepping down from the board to know how much we've appreciated your respect, your courtesy, your politeness toward the residents, your impartiality, and the hours you've spent working that we don't even know about. I know how hard it's been. I can only imagine, though, but you went through it. Lisa's another one sitting over there, hardworking, she's always there, faithful to everything Goochlin was created to be. And you carried that banner for us, and I think you know who I'm talking to. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Goochlin was better because you came, you supported what Goochlin stood for, and you helped us all.
Thank you, Ms. Handy. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, so you know him, close the citizen comment period. All right, we will move into our first public hearing of the evening. District Five, application for Crystal Goodwin. Another Crystal, but with a K.
Good evening, Chairman Spooner, members of the board. I'm Crystal Onitis, Deputy County Administrator. Just give me a moment here. This, oh, this is the applicant's presentation. Apologies. There we go. From beginning. I love it when I can work my computer skills. So again, good evening. This is your first public hearing of the evening. It is from Crystal Goodwin. It is for a conditional use permit for a detached accessory family, family housing unit for family-related use. It's on a parcel that is 17.6 acres located at 1180 Yellow Gate Lane in the zoning of residential rural, and our comp plan designates this area as rural enhancement. It's specifically the Deep Run Hunt Country, which has a special designation within our comp plan. So the location that I referenced before is located in the Hebron Springs subdivision. If I said that wrong, I apologize. I said it wrong earlier this week when I was practicing. It's about 1.5 miles north of Route Six, and, I'm sorry, Yellow Gate Lane connects to Miller's Lane. So it's, runs parallel to Route Six. Miller's Lane, as you all know, kind of connects at, heads off at Mannakin. So it's nestled away. It's a large lot home in a subdivision with less than, I have notes. There's nine lots in Hebron Spring subdivision, so it is a very large lot subdivision development. The zoning map, as I mentioned before, designates this as rural residential. And the A2 zoning north is Bayless Estates. And again, on our comp plan map, it is the rural enhancement area, which again is characterized by low-density residential, agricultural forest or other uses which are not planned for public or central utilities, and having a significant amount of open space with any residential uses. So just specifically to this site, the primary dwelling is here circled in red. That's a two-story home that's about 9,000 square feet. The proposed accessory dwelling unit will be above a garage circled here in yellow at upper level of 750 feet for a total of 3,000 square feet of an accessory structure. The building does meet our setbacks as required by zoning, and based on the comp plan and the designations that this parcel lies within, it is consistent with the comp plan. Both structures will access the same driveway, and the applicant understands the need to obtain Health Department approval for well and septic. As I mentioned, the application is consistent with our comprehensive plan. A community meeting was held July 31st of 2023. No one from the community actually attended, and we did validate that notices were sent. The Planning Commission heard this case on September 7th last month during the public hearing. I will make note that no one spoke, but the applicant did ask the Planning Commission for a 10-year CUP. However, a five-year standard term CUP was approved on a 5-0 vote. Here's the conditions. I'm happy to go through them. They are standard CUP conditions without any exceptions or exemptions for our accessory family housing units that the county has.
Thank you, Ms. Onitis. Board, any questions for staff? Did the applicant want to say anything?
I believe the applicant is here and, or the representative is here, I apologize.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Rothenmalm, an attorney with the law firm of Spotsvein, here for Ms. Goodwin tonight. We thank the staff for working with us on this case. We, they did add some language to one of the conditions specifying that caregivers and caretakers are allowed to reside in the accessory dwelling unit. That's one of the main reasons Ms. Goodwin is seeking to, to make this change or to do this finish of the detached garage. Ms. Onitis mentioned, you know, I know this standard is a five-year renewal. On something like this, you know, we've agreed that this, this property is not going to be rented out. It's not going to be listed on any sort of Airbnb or, you know, short-term rental website. This is Ms. Goodwin's, parents are aging. She herself is a heart transplant recipient, doing great now, but just sort of planning for the future. So, you know, we would ask for some relief on that five-year renewal to, I technically asked for it to be, to be done away with, but the staff convinced me to just ask for 10 years. So we would ask for the, for the, for the board's favor on that to amend that condition and make the renewal only every 10 years. But with that, that's, I'm happy to answer any questions there may be, but we appreciate the board's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Rothenmalm. Board, any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Jonathan Lyle, 1521 Mannakin Road. One of the things I've appreciated about this board is that you have looked at each zoning request individually and understood, thanks to Ms. McGee, that there is no precedent being set when you make decisions. The fact that somebody is looking for family or someone to assist family to utilize this makes sense to me that a 10-year CUP extension is appropriate. I know with Little Hawk Farms, you were able to accommodate them with an extension or an exception, if we want to use that word, to the five-year CUP. This is something that makes sense. It's for family. It's not going to be rented out. And as much fun as I have coming to board meetings, not everybody thinks it's a good idea or a good way to spend a Tuesday night. So if you could go ahead and accommodate the 10-year request, I think that would be the right thing to do, and I hope you will.
Thank you, Mr. Lyle. Anybody else wish to comment? Okay, now, in closing the public hearing. Okay, board, any questions, motion, discussion? Mr. Vardis.
So the proposed, so it would be as amended to say we approve a five-year? Or is that the opposite? As amended would be to approve a 10-year? Okay. I just do, I don't necessarily like the precedent being set with the potential 10-year amendment, so just wanted to make sure I knew how it was going to be proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments?
If I understood, Mr. Vardis, I don't know that it's precedent-setting if we allowed 10 years. I recall we've done that in the past.
Just to follow on that, maybe Ms. McGee can weigh in here. As I understand it, when we approve a conditional use permit, a CUP, it creates a unique zoning for that particular property. Is that correct?
It does. In fact, although this application has before you the standard conditions, we actually did amend the language about the use to ensure that it was crystal clear that a caregiver or caretaker could be in the, in the, excuse me, accessory dwelling, which is appropriate. But yeah, is that a little different than other ones? It is, because each conditional use is, should be its own. It may start from the standard commissions and it may end there, but variation is permitted because it's very, it's unique.
So neither of those, the addition of caregivers nor the five to 10, neither of those would create any kind of precedent that would.
That's correct.
Obligate the board. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, I see you right on.
Mr. Chair, if you're prepared to entertain a motion?
Yes, please.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move that the board grant conditional use permit CU 2023, number 13, for detached accessory family dwelling unit at 1180 Yellow Gate Lane, subject to imposed conditions with the following amendment. I propose that we extend the duration to a 10-year so it expired the last day of October of 2033.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Ms. McGee, please refresh my memory. With the conditional use permits, if the house were to sell or something, would these conditions transfer to new owners?
They do, transfer to new owners.
That's, that's why I can't support it 10 years.
How is, how is that not precedent?
Precedent is a different concept, whereas it impacts your next decision. as opposed to the length of time of the CUP.
So, again, just, I'm sorry, just follow on that. So yes, it does transfer, and yes, it would continue to bind any future owner as to only family and/or caregivers.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The condition does include it in our standard that at the time of transfer, they're required to tell the new people about the conditions here that have to be met. So that is, we always include that in the CUP because it does run with the land and the property for whatever period of time it's granted. So we also have a provision that we're required to notify them.
And who is obligated to monitor what a new owner would do?
There is no monitoring. The county has a complaint-based system for any zoning violations.
So five years allows us to come back to the table sooner to see what's, that things are being done as they should be, whereas a new owner could take things into their own hands effectively, correct?
At five years, it would be back before the board.
That's, okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing them, Mr. Carpenter will call it.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Laskalet?
Yes.
Ms. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Ms. Rothenwald?
No.
Mrs. Spooner?
No.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations. You got your, they go, there you are. All the suits bundled in there. All right. Thank you very much. All right. We're moving on to our next case, which is in District Four. Ms. Naitis?
Back again. I am Crystal Naitis, Deputy County Administrator for the record. And the next case you have before you all is a rezoning and a conditional use permit for SP Real Estate Holdings LLC, also known as a Honda dealership, is the applicant's intent. There are companion cases for this. As I mentioned, there's a rezoning, which is a, actually seeking a proffer amendment to an existing rezoning case to add a car dealership use to the approved use of an existing memory care facility as an approved use. Sorry, I said that confusingly, but makes sense. A conditional use permit as well for automobile sales. So that's an additional condition that they are seeking should the rezoning be approved. The board may hold one public hearing for both cases. However, you all, as a body, must vote on the rezoning first and then the conditional use permit. So just a little specifics on this site. Again, it is located right on Broad Street Road, also known as Route 250, at the Henrico and Goochlin County line. It's located on the south side of Broad at the Goochlin-Henrico boundary, as I just mentioned, and it's 6.93 acres as an actual site, and it contains the Centerville Booster Station. It also has some other features that go through it, such as a utility line for Henrico County. Just going into the comprehensive plan designations, this site is located within our prime economic development area. It is also a designated growth area. It is zoned B1 general business with proffers. Again, it was previously rezoned to allow for memory care and associated uses for that. They are seeking rezoning to add car dealership use. It is part of our Centerville Overlay District. And again, just a little more on our comprehensive plan designations. The prime economic development area and its intent is to promote a positive impact on the county's tax base, promote and attract uses that serve to retain corporate investment and generate jobs, as well as expand diversity of the county's tax base, which I mentioned. The designated growth areas, as outlined in our comp plans, are areas where commercial and residential development should be concentrated. The advantages of having such areas include proactively planning and coordinating, reducing pressure to develop rural areas, and supporting cost effectiveness by utilizing existing and planned infrastructure, facilitating private sector investment in infrastructure, such as our Tuckahoe Creek Service District. And this subject property is within the Tuckahoe Creek Service District. So just continuing on with our comp plan analysis, these applications, both the rezoning and the conditional use, are consistent with the comprehensive plan designations per staff analysis. Touching on where this hits with our Economic Development Strategic Plan that the county has, these applications are also consistent with the Economic Development Strategic Plan that promotes retail development in the county's designated growth areas and especially within our TCSD. So more on the site in and of itself. So as I mentioned, it's zoned business general B1 to allow for memory care facility-related uses and banking institutions. Here's a list of the already existing approved uses. The existing permitted uses were approved in 2015 with zoning and are part of this application at the request of the current owner seller. So essentially, they're seeking to add an additional use and retain existing uses. Here is a conceptual plan that the applicant has provided us for the proposed Honda dealership. The staff has marked up this conceptual plan to show some major, I don't know what you want to call it, major features of the site, including the structure itself, as well as county or adjacent county infrastructure. So there is a county booster station, as I mentioned, which you can see over there in the rear of the site plan. There's a parking area that's being proposed, a six-vehicle display area, a showroom, a vehicle service area, parking deck, an outdoor display area, and a drive aisle along the property line. And I will mention that, there we go, this drive aisle is right here at the Goochlin-Henrico County line. So this image is for reference only. Again, we understand that this is in the Centerville Overlay District, as does the applicant, so any final elevations, all of those things, the look, feel, have to go through our Development Review Committee and get approval. But this is a rough rendering of how the showroom could look and feel, the vehicle display areas where they're proposed as a layout, as well as the vehicle service area, which is going, which is intended to service as preventative maintenance and general repair, and a three-story parking garage. I mentioned before the existing conditions, and I want to dive into that a little more. As I said, there was a booster station, there's floodplain, as well as a utility easement for Henrico that bisects the site. There's also very challenging topo features or topographic features. So the applicant has been very accommodating and working to address all of those things, ensuring for one, that the county will have access to our booster station, that it will be screened, working with Henrico County on a utility agreement for services, also making sure that they are meeting any of our stormwater and best management practices with working near a floodplain. So the buffer deviation is something that has come up throughout this process. I did mention that the drive aisle, seen here by the red arrow, there's a 30-foot buffer adjacent to residential districts typically required. The applicant is seeking a proffered condition that alleviates this. Typically, this can be done administratively, however, the applicant wants to have it as a proffered condition. The property at the adjacent side of the Henrico County line is a mixed-use development. There is very little buffer on the Henrico County line that has been provided on their end of the development. Also, it's important to state that per Section 15-380, if the property's topography, configuration, or other unique circumstances prevent full compliance with the requirements, such as the 30-foot buffer, the Director of Community Development may approve deviations, which I just briefly touched on. Now, I will also reiterate with regards to that buffer, that drive aisle here was actually shown in the 2015 rezoning that was done for the memory care facility. So that deviation was already previously approved, and it's consistent with something that's already been proposed previously on the site. As discussed, this is part of the Centerville Overlay District. I alluded to it earlier, but again, for a certificate of approval, the Design Review Committee will consider at minimum, as I mentioned, building design, building materials, parking area, orientation of bay doors. Onto transportation, where we've also had some concerns and questions from the public about just the traffic or any kind of conflicts that this might create. A traffic impact analysis was done, which recommends the widening of both entrances. The applicant is working to do that. They're actually proffering a right-turn lane at the western entrance, a entrance and exit at the western entrance, and an entrance only at the eastern entrance. So to improve traffic flow to the site, they're going to have one entrance that's only entrance, and two that are entrance-exit. Both entrances, however, do not meet spacing requirements from the traffic light in Henrico County. However, given the topography of the site and layout, VDOT has actually provided a spacing waiver and approved it for each entrance. And I will mention that VDOT also approved the traffic impact analysis and reviewed that as well, in addition to our county engineer. Just want to highlight that you all do have some black line proffers up before you all on the dais. So as I go into this, there have been some proffer changes since the September Planning Commission meeting. There's a new conceptual plan that shows a wider entrances per the traffic impact analysis, and the removal of sales or rental of watercraft, motorcycles, and industrial trucks. Proffer summary, you know, going over the uses and conditions, plans for both 2015 approved uses and car dealership, signage details complying with our zoning ordinance with regards to signage, screening of HVAC and dumpsters, right-turn lane at the western entrance, reduction of the buffer requirements on the eastern property line, and the drive aisle that was consistent with 2015. A summary of the conditional use permit conditions, this is only addressing the car dealership use, so it's important to emphasize that. It's permitting the car dealership use, subject to the conditional use permit conditions, develop in general accordance with the conceptual plan, which they are proffering. No conditional use permit activity without an approved plan of development and a certificate of approval from the Design Review Committee, because again, this is in our overlay district. Vehicle maintenance and accessory service must be in an enclosed building, so no open-air, you know, car work. Vehicle display and inventory is limited to a showroom and six designated areas outside of the 100-foot setback shown in Exhibit A, which is their conceptual plan that is proffered. Limited hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which is consistent with the operating hours of car dealerships. No outside storage of parts and supplies, follow local, state, and federal regulations, fencing and landscaping around the county booster station, which was covered a little earlier, and comply with county lighting and sign regulation, and the standard transfer of lease, as is our standard conditional use permit condition, that should the property transfer change hands, the Director of Community Development would be notified in writing, and the property owner transferring ownership has to notify the next new owners of conditions and all of the allowable uses. A community meeting was held for SP Real Estate Holdings LLC for this Honda dealership on January 27 of this year. There were 11 attendees. Questions and concerns that we heard included vehicles entering and exiting on Broad Street Road, the topography of the site, little potential impact on Little Tuckahoe Creek, how they would meet the regulations of the overlay district, and the appearance of the parking deck. Other citizen input that we've received are emails concerned with the representation of the height of the parking deck, the traffic study numbers, and retaining the rural feel, height of the dealership buffer, and overall appearance. Just a little history on this case. It has been before the Planning Commission twice. That is because the first time, it was heard the rezoning actually had a tie vote, which meant that they deferred the conditional use permit vote. So it was actually heard on September 7 by the full Planning Commission and approved on a 3-2 vote for the rezoning and a 3-2 vote for the conditional use permit. At the September 7 Planning Commission meeting, five citizens spoke in opposition, noting concerns with the proposed buffer, traffic, and overall layout of the site. As I mentioned before, the board may hold one public hearing for both of these cases, but the rezoning must be voted on prior to the conditional use. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Ms. Naitis. Board, any questions? Ms. Laskalet?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Naitis. So we've had this question come up before, so maybe we can all remember the answer to it, what we said before. So under the permitted uses, the definition of automobile versus motor vehicle?
Yes, ma'am. I will defer to the county attorney on that.
Yeah, I would too. For the friend.
Automobile generally is described as a personal passenger vehicle. Motor vehicle are vehicles above 10,000 pounds without
Okay. So we're striking the industrial trucks, but leaving in motor vehicles. Maybe when the applicant gets up, we can talk about that. Just want to be sure we understand what type of vehicles we're talking about here.
Yes, ma'am, and the applicant does have a presentation this evening.
Okay. The next question I have, I believe, is going to be for the applicant, so
Okay.
thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Lumpkins?
Your slides 17 and 18. 17.
Hold, please.
Yes, sir.
When you said staff, marked this up. I think your rest, the rest of your presentation, and my assumption is the markups are only the red, just to
Yes, sir.
highlight things. And the reason I'm asking is because I'm, what I'm looking at in our packet
is different.
is the plan of development, and that's, so you haven't, what you showed us hasn't changed anything from what, except the red markings, nothing has changed in terms of what the applicant is obligated to follow, in terms of following their conceptual plan.
No, sir. Nothing has changed. We put these red markings with arrows on the conceptual to make it easier for the audience, and quite frankly, myself, because near screens a little distance.
That's good. When you said the broad thing, we marked it up some. I just want to make sure
Yes, we marked it up to better indicate where specific features were.
And the next slide, I think you said right at the top, it's for reference only. That is not part of what the applicant is representing as part of a conceptual plan, correct?
Correct. This is for reference only because, as I mentioned, this is the overlay district, and the Design Review Committee has to approve the final look, feel, building materials, such of the development.
Maybe we can hear from the applicant to what extent that they're representing that this is reflective of what their plans are.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Rothenwald?
I just want to put this on the record. Can you confirm this is 100% east of 288?
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to make
Hold on, I need to get a compass.
where this is located
Yes.
for everybody. Thank you.
It is east of the 288 interchange, immediately at the Henrico-Goochlin line.
Just two quick things. So, and this, this may be more educational for myself, but we're talking, you mentioned that there is a proffer to remove a buffer. Would that not be more of an extension or a waiver? Profers to me, and again, maybe this is just a new situation,
Yes.
profers to me are, they're offering stuff for us.
Yes. Typically, that is how they work. The applicant sought that to be a proffered condition so that at the time that a conditional use permit may not come up for another application, it would not be something that they would have to get a waiver for. So they want it in perpetuity for while they have the site in their operation. So they didn't want something that was administrative that could be overridden later by a future director arbitrarily.
It couldn't be, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
So we could get a new director 10 years from now, and then that changes.
Okay.
In addition, Mr. Spooner, while much of my local government work has been under the idea that profers have to be more than what the zoning ad and ordinance requires, there was a Virginia Supreme Court case just in recent years that said, oh, no, they could be anything. So that has changed relatively recently. And yeah, so I had to turn my mind around that regularly.
Okay. And then the other piece, the other thing I just wanted to bring up is that in your presentation, you mentioned that they would conform with, you know, the signage and things like that, and just want to make sure the applicant's aware that by ordinance, that they're not asking for electronic signs at this time, because at the time of application, and that they would have to come back to us if they did want to use some sort of electronic sign.
I will let the applicant respond to that, but yes, the county at this time has only approved in our overlay district one electronic message board.
Thank you. Okay. Would be, oh, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Chair? Thank you. Just two quick questions. In that, to follow up on that proffer, it was five foot of buffer?
It's 30 feet.
Yep. The proffered condition was, I'll read it here. Landscaping and buffer, at least five feet along the eastern property line?
Yes, sir.
So it was a five-foot buffer on it?
Yes.
Eastern property line?
There will be a five-foot buffer now. Previously, that buffer was also something that was consistent with the memory care and their rezoning in 2015.
So that lane that goes by and the five-foot buffer were both part of the previous case?
Yes.
I just want to confirm the five-foot was the buffer?
Yes, sir.
On the Henrico side, the other county side, what is their buffer on their development?
It is minimal. I will defer to Ms. Sherry, our Community Development Director, for the exact footage.
Excuse me, Mr. Peterson. I don't know the exact footage. I have visited the site, and I've looked at their plan of development. It appears to be a strip of landscaping It appears to be a strip of landscaping, and it's just perimeter parking landscaping, so a few street trees, as well as maybe 10, 15 feet of grass.
Okay, can you put up the same marked up map that you had up before?
Yes, sir.
That's the technical definition. Do you pass it already?
Yeah, yeah.
Get it back up just a little bit more. Bingo, okay. Now, the audience isn't expected to read this, but there's a five right here, and I didn't know if that five was a five-foot buffer on the other side or not.
No, that five-foot buffer will be on the county, Goochlin County side?
That's the five-foot on our side.
Yes, sir.
Even though the five is on the other side of the line. Okay, that's fine.
Good catch.
I understand, I understand. The second question then had to do with, this is going to be a different slide, the easement for the water and sewer. There was a, I think it was a yellow line that came, not the pump station itself, but the...
The blue?
Oh, yeah, there's the blue utility easement. As I understand, one of the challenges with this property, which there are many, was the fact that there's infrastructure from both counties kind of crisscrossing.
Yes, sir.
Could you give me an update very quickly on the Henrico involvement in those entanglements?
Yes, sir, I wouldn't call them entanglements, actually. Per our master utility agreement that we adopted in 2002 with Henrico County, we actually have an executed utility agreement for this site to ensure that typically wherever you have the closest line to tie into is where you will connect. So we have an agreement with Henrico that properties that are along that line, whoever has the line closest, whether it's Goochlin or Henrico, they tie into and connect, and that's been approved by Henrico County. And again, this property will pay the TCSD ad valorem.
You know, it's tying into a Henrico line?
Correct. Because the, sorry, the Tuckahoe Creek Service District is tied to the parcel.
Okay, so we kind of have a mutual agreement that the closer of, and that's already in place, so there's no...
Yes, sir.
There's no further agreements necessary to...
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the update I was looking for, so thank you.
Yes.
Okay, the applicant like to come forward?
That's you?
Just right-click and then do...
Do what?
Start it here exactly.
Yes, that's forward advance, and this is the highlighter.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Mike Rothemel. I'm an attorney with Spotsvein, here representing the applicant. We have lots of visuals tonight, because we knew there were lots of questions, so we have what I think are answers to those questions. Before I start, though, two administrative things, I would like to reserve some time for rebuttal, depending on what's said in opposition tonight. And then I'd also like to introduce the team that I have with me here tonight, because anticipating the questions, I wanted the experts to be here. Sitting with me, Joey Wong would be the owner and operator of the Honda dealership. Sitting next to him is Bill Kemble. He is with Rainier Construction. He'd be the construction project manager for the site. Back in the row behind them, Carl Holgren is with Grave Slade. He's traffic engineer, working with us. Next to him is Dave Calby. He is with Archall Architects. He's, him and his group have put together some really good, as realistic as you can get, renderings for what we think this site's going to look like. And then next to Dave is Matt Hamilton with CBRE.
Mr. Rothemel, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
I just want to give you just a layout of how you can conduct this, just so it might help your presentation. So you have a chance to present, the board will ask you questions, then we'll open the public hearing, and you have an opportunity after the public hearing to address anything that comes up after that.
Great.
Then the board will deliberate after a motion.
Okay, so I didn't need to reserve... Okay, I'm sorry. I must hit that by accident. So let me, let me see if I can scroll up here to, how do I, Jamie, how do I get to the beginning of the presentation?
There's a chance you might need to do. The up-down button seems...
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, Lord.
How do I get this to top two?
How did you exit fullscreen? It's in fullscreen. I guess we could zoom in. How about this, Mike? It's not letting me zoom in.
Those are the only two that are small.
Yeah, my apologies.
Okay, if the first two are the only two that are small, that's fine. So the first slide is actually something that Jamie or Crystal had in her presentation. So I want to emphasize the fact that this site is not just east of 288, it's east of Tuckahoe Creek. So it's one of the few parcels that's on, you know, that side of Tuckahoe Creek, right on the county line. So some of the people we've talked to and met with over the course, and we've been working on this site for over a year now, you know, thought the site was in Henrico, because it's on this side of, or the east side of Tuckahoe Creek. The second slide there, which is a little small, but it shows all the surrounding users. So if you see on your screen there, the proposed Honda site is shown with a blue star. Just across the street, you have Aldi and CVS on the Henrico side, and then you move into Henrico, I'm sorry, you move into Goochlin, and you have Valvoline, Tommy's Car Wash, Chick-fil-A, Wawa, Mr. Page's Audi dealership, Drive Shack are all right across the street. So this, we feel like this fits in real nice with what is already existing east of 288. As I move down here to the later slides, so I wanted to highlight the constraints of this site. This is a really difficult site to develop. It's a great site from a location perspective, but it's very difficult, challenging site, I should say, from a development perspective. What Bill and his group have done is sort of highlighted this. The highlighted red line that goes through there is the Henrico County sanitary sewer easement. So that obviously affects the building footprint. We can't put anything, any building or permanent structure on top of that sewer easement. And that's a trunk line, so it's a wide easement. So you can see how that really restricts the, you know, the building footprint on this site, and then of course, to the north of that, you have the county's pump station. So from a, again, from a development perspective, it was kind of challenging, and we've gone through this over the past year, back and forth, and really getting into site plan issues. We've sort of moved beyond the zoning issues, not, we haven't moved beyond them in the sense that we are respectful and understand that the board has the ultimate decision in that, but given the timeline, and frankly, what happened in 2015, the applicant came in, got the zoning approvals, but couldn't move forward with the site. So what we've done, and it was really at the request of staff, was to look at some of these site plan issues to make sure that this site could work for this particular development. So we have gotten into the, you know, the specific engineering and site design issues. If I can here, go to the next slide. So this just shows, you know, outlined in red is the area that would be disturbed, and, you know, what is shown in green would be non-disturbed areas. And then going back to the layout plan, so, and Crystal covered this, so, but, you know, what we're showing here is, you know, reception and showroom in the front, service area sort of behind that. And then there wasn't a lot of discussion about the parking deck, but I will, you know, I will tell you, you know, we've had a lot of questions about the parking deck, and that's been a big focus of, you know, the back and forth with the county. You know, from, from the, you know, a planning perspective, I mean, we would argue and suggest that, you know, that this is, the deck is preferable. You don't have a, sort of a sea of surface parking, where you have, you know, tons of impervious pavement that's needed to house inventory. So, and I will say that, the parking deck is not a concession to my client, that's a big-ticket item. I think Bill Kemble will say that's, you know, an $8 to $10 million parking deck. And we think that that's actually an attractive feature of this site, sort of reducing the footprint, you know, of an automobile dealership, which would normally sort of be a sprawling feature of the site. The deck is three stories, the proposed deck is three stories. That is lower in total height than the adjacent residential on the Henrico side, which is four stories. And frankly, it makes the site work, the parking deck. So let me move into some of the renderings now. And as I mentioned, Dave Calby and his group at Archall put these together. So this is just sort of an overview site, an overview layout, sort of, excuse me, showing the site, how it lays out next to the Stanley Martin site, and then you'll see some numbers on the drawing there that are going to match up with the renderings I'm going to point to. Now, this next slide was just to, just to give an idea as far as the adjacent residential on the Henrico side, and how that is oriented, because there were some questions about, well, what, you know, what are they going to be looking at? And you'll notice that the front sections that are closer to Broad Street are oriented north and south. And so, you know, there, I guess, are two end units, one on each of those cluster of buildings that, you know, would have some windows, sort of looking out, you know, over to the automobile dealership. And then the units that are more to the south, more to the rear of their site, are actually oriented, the front of those units are away from our site. And as you'll notice, that back area of our proposed site would remain largely undisturbed. So moving to the next slide, so these are some renderings. Dave's group really did a nice job, I think, of making these as realistic as possible. You'll notice here that, you know, there is, so if you look at the adjacent site, the residential, the frontage along Broad Street on that site was approved, I'm, my understanding, and Jamie can correct us, that's all non-residential. So this is, you know, this is a mixed-use development in Henrico, not all that dissimilar from West Broad Village or Green Gate, right up the street, where you have residential mixed in with commercial and other non-residential uses. So, you know, we would suggest we sort of fit right in. And again, this site was zoned commercial back in 2015. It may have been B1 before that, I don't know, but, you know, it's been zoned commercial for 2015. So it was zoned commercial with an approved sort of concept plan and drive aisle right next to it when the adjacent site got developed. So that didn't, that didn't stop them from coming in at that point. Here's another visual. This one shows the county's booster station to the west of the proposed Honda dealership. You'll also notice, and I don't know if you can see my pointer on your screens, but, so this pad site is in Henrico, and I don't know exactly what's going to be going there, but it's non-residential, I believe, because it's along Broad Street. But this sort of gives a perspective of, you know, a view from the site from, I guess this would be the northeast. You know, one other thing, the question was asked, I think, of Ms. Onitis about these renderings, and how realistic are they? We have not proffered any of the elevations or the renderings, only because we have to go through the design review committee. So we can't be stuck with profers of elevations that the design review committee wants to tweak, because that would mean we would have to come back before this board. So that's the only reason, you know, we haven't, we haven't proffered any of these. You know, I think Joey would tell you that the architects have spent a lot of time on this, putting these together, and every intent is that this is going to be what it ultimately looks like. This next rendering is from Broad Street. You will notice that there is a fairly significant, you know, grade issue here, elevation, that the site will be somewhat elevated from Broad Street, because one of the issues, when you talk about the Centerville Overlay District, or I guess it's the Village, Village Overlay, one of the issues that we're going to be asking relief for, which is similar to the relief that was granted on the other side of the street, I believe, for Tommy's and Valvoline, Jamie can correct me if I'm wrong, but our bay doors for the service area face forward, so we're going to need to seek relief from that. But as you can see here, there's a lot of buffering and screening for the site, just from a natural topography standpoint. But then these, the landscaping and the trees and the shrubs that are shown in here actually match what I believe what we've shown, already shown on the landscaping plan that we've sort of submitted for just early comments, if, you know, if we're fortunate enough to get approval tonight and move forward to the design review committee. Here's just another rendering, sort of, again, excuse me, looking from street level, from the northeast, showing the site here. And then these are, these are some elevations that Dave's group has put together as well. These are what we would be presenting to the design review committee. Again, we haven't proffered these, because the design review committee may have some comments on them, and we may need to alter them, but we have, Joey and his development team have put a lot of time, they've talked to a lot of stakeholders, the county, other, you know, surrounding property owners, West Creek, about getting some comments on what this building, what the parking deck should look like. And so this takes into account all of that. They have, you know, they're showing some building materials here that they would use. Again, we would take these to the design review committee. These are not in any way dissimilar or different than, I believe, what, you know, the uses across the street had to go into the design review committee and ask for permission to use, so. So let me, if I can, move into some of, unless there are any questions on those renderings, I want to move into traffic, because that was, that was an issue and the source of a lot of questions here. I don't know if I can, can I re-center this? Sorry, Jamie.
My apologies, this worked out perfectly well on my computer today.
There we go.
Is that the right one you want to see? I just scrolled up and down with this, Mike.
Okay, with the...
No, with this, I just did that.
Oh, okay, all right, let me do this. So we actually have a number of exhibits here. I don't know, I guess I can't just click and drag, but...
Are you trying to go up or down?
I think I can make this work, yep. So we have put together, and this, Carl Holgren worked with the civil engineers on these four next slides. So these are using what's called an auto-turn program that the civil engineers use to show access to the site, circulation amongst the site, because there's been questions about traffic and vehicle movements both in and around the site. Now, one thing I want to comment on, sort of initially from a traffic perspective, is that automobile dealerships, I think Carl Holgren will tell you, if you want him to come up here, are low-traffic generators. They are not convenience stores, they're not sort of those high-volume retail where you're generating a ton of traffic coming in and out. They're considered sort of low-volume. Most of the question, and I think there were some questions about that at the initial planning commission meeting. Some of the other questions that were posed last time dealt with trucks coming in and out of the site. So what Carl worked with Silvercore on putting together with these auto-turn exhibits, and so what we've done, the first two actually show fire trucks coming in and out of the site and moving around the site, and, because obviously the county's fire department had some input, and, you know, we had lots of meetings already with various departments within the county, again, to make sure this site works, if we're fortunate enough to get the approval tonight, to make sure the site would work. And so the county had a lot of feedback... And so, the county had a lot of feedback, fire said, I think we were initially showing a 24-foot wide drive aisle, they said we need 26 for the fire trucks. So, we did that, we widened the drive aisle. And what these next two exhibits show is that fire trucks can come in the site and go all the way around the building without any issue. So, this particular exhibit shows the fire truck coming in the eastern entrance and moving around the building. And then the next visual here shows the, okay, this one shows the fire truck coming in the western entrance, no issue in either entrance, because obviously, you know, if a fire truck's coming to the site, it's an emergency or, you know, a short-time fuse type of situation. You don't want the fire department, you know, having to use this particular entrance. What these two exhibits show is that, you know, a fire truck can come in either access point, get all the way around the building with no issue. The next slide shows, and this was, this shows what's called a low-boy trailer. We were asked to run this by VDOT. And so, that's the vehicle that they wanted us to show as far as, you know, being able to access the site. And so, what this particular exhibit shows is that a low-boy trailer can come in that eastern entrance and make its way around the building without any issue. And the last exhibit here, Mr. Williams, at the planning commission meeting, had some issues, you know, with sort of an extended car carrier, whether or not it could access the site, you know, both ingress and egress. And so, we had the engineers run auto-turn for that particular vehicle. And what it shows is that the car carriers can come in the eastern entrance. And what will happen is, these car carriers, if we have one coming in this big, I don't know if they're all, and maybe Bill can talk about this, but even if this large one comes in, they will not be circulating the site. They will be coming into the site off of Broad Street, getting rid of the inventory, and then exiting the site on the western side here, through the western entrance. Because there was some issue, some questions raised at the last meeting, well, can this truck access the site and get out without turning into the middle or outside lane of VDOT or of Broad Street? And so, this diagram exhibit, and this is sort of a standard and accepted program that civil engineers use, shows that, you know, it absolutely can. One other thing I should note is that we're talking about, you know, probably less than one truck a day. You know, I think, remind me, 15 to 20 car haulers a month, 20, somewhere in there. So, I mean, we're talking about less than one a day on average. So, this is not a steady stream of big trucks coming into the site. But, you know, the few that come in, this site can accommodate. One other thing I failed to note on one of the earlier slides, so the building is actually set back 100 feet as far as a setback, but it's actually set back more than that because we have accommodated, you'll note that there's a notation on this particular slide that says "proposed property line" right here. So, VDOT has, I guess, identified that sometime in the future, Broad Street would be expanded by adding an additional through lane. And so, we have planned for that with this by showing where the ultimate, you know, right-of-way line would be, and we've set back from that ultimate right-of-way line. So, again, lots of planning, not just for now, but in the future. These slides, you know, these are just sort of restatements of what was in Jamie's slide, or, I'm sorry, Crystal's slides. You know, we think that this is a perfect use. When you look at the comp plan, when you look at the existing zoning, when you look at the already existing uses on that particular section of Broad Street, you know, this site is zoned commercial already, we're simply adding one additional use. This site is challenging. It takes a special use to, you know, to justify the amount of site work and investment that needs to go into the site in order to develop it and make it work. You know, we think it hits all of the points that Crystal walked through as far as the comprehensive plan and the prime economic development designation. And so, I think that, you know, we think this is a perfect use for this, a great use from a zoning perspective. We've gotten into a lot of issues here that are really site plan issues. You know, we, if we're fortunate enough to be approved tonight, we will be coming in with our POD, you know, very soon. The county has the ability to go back and forth on the site plan. If there needs to be tweaks made to turning radiuses on access points or issues that need to be addressed, those will be addressed. But we've gotten into most of that already, simply to make sure this site works. From a zoning perspective, we don't think there could be any better site. And I will also say, I think the use, we believe is a good one. I think you're also going to be getting a really good user here. My client, Mr. Wong, who I've worked with now for over a year, was awarded this site by Honda after a very lengthy process and a very, you know, rigorous vetting procedure. He's got a number of other dealerships in Ohio and New York, including a number of Honda dealerships. He's been awarded the President's Award from Honda, I think, six or seven years. He's got numerous community service awards. He knows about, you know, being part of this community. He'd really welcome and appreciate the opportunity to locate here in Goochlin. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I've got all the experts here on our team to answer any specific questions you may have.
Board, any questions before I open the public hearing? Ms. LaScola.
Okay, thank you very much. Just a couple of things, I want to be sure I'm totally clear on. And I believe the question was asked about the utilities. So, there is an agreement in place, there's nothing else you have to do. You can hook up to the Henrico Utilities, is that what I'm hearing?
So, I'll defer to the county attorney. I will say that, I would personally say we've talked to, we've met with and talked with Henrico Utilities about hooking to the sewer line, because again, in order to hook to Goochlin Sewer Line, we would need to somehow get under Tuckahoe Creek, because I think the nearest connection is on the other side of Tuckahoe Creek. You know, we've talked to Henrico, we've met with them. My understanding is we would be hooking to Henrico Sewer and Goochlin water.
Okay, I just want to be crystal clear on that. If you don't mind, Mr. Chair, to have a couple more questions. So, you talked a little bit about the traffic improvements that are planned for Broad Street coming off 288 there. And you have made provisions for right-of-way for that expanded lane.
So, we've, right, we've designed the site, and Bill can talk about this more specifically. So, VDOT, and it was a very lengthy process with VDOT, right? I mean, we went back and forth.
You don't have to tell us.
For quite a few months. But somewhere along the line, I guess, it was pointed out that there was a future plan to widen Broad Street, put an additional through lane through. So, the site was laid out and designed with that in mind.
Got you. Good answer. Okay, two more. So, does this franchise, this particular manufacturer, automobile manufacturer, have any design requirements that would affect the design of this building?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to Joey and Bill, maybe if you guys want to come up.
And do we see any problem with our design review committee? That's probably a multi-phase question. So, hopefully we won't run into an issue with that. And then I have one more question after this.
Good evening, Bill Kemble, 19457 Belchurch Road, Uco, Ohio. To answer your question, yes, manufacturers do have certain requirements for their buildings, some of what you see here, especially the Blue Stage, that's what this current generation of, for Honda, for their manufacturing. So, there are certain requirements that we have to meet to match their buildings.
Right. And have those requirements been shared with staff so we kind of have an idea of what you're looking at there?
What you see is fairly reminiscent of what we're going to be going in front of for our COA, in front of the design committee review, to review with them and get, you know, meet with them for approval.
The only thing I'd add to that in this last call-in is, and I know Mr. Page is here tonight, I think Audi had to do the same thing. I think Audi had certain requirements.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then I have one last question, I don't know who might want to answer it. So, this issue of the being adjacent to the Henrico line, the setbacks and retaining walls, and I think maybe the lay of the land is that the residential portion of the Henrico project maybe is, are they a little bit lower, higher? I mean, I know there's a lot of topography going on here.
Yeah, you're correct. There is some topography. In general, they're about six feet higher in elevation than our site, so we will have a retaining wall along the property line, five feet off the property line for that separation.
Okay. And we're not, I guess we're not specifying the height of the retaining wall, is that just a matter of engineering?
It's engineering, correct.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, that's it, that's all I got, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Board, any other questions at this time? Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, don't go too far. All right, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this, please come to the microphone, give us your name and address, and please leave your comments in three minutes.
My name is Dexter Williams, 2319 Latham Place. You've heard reference to me, I spoke at the last public hearing about the trucks. And I can say that it looks like adjustments have been made and some other exhibits have been presented. Let's see here, so I get to my stuff this way.
Now, we'll pull yours up.
All right, thank you.
This should go left, right. So, this would be moving forward, would be the white button, and this would be moving back.
This is moving back, and I'm starting on the right, okay. All right, well, this is one of the exhibits that was presented with VDOT's program. First of all, excuse me, I should also explain, I am working for Larry Page, I'm here on his behalf. He has concerns, obviously, about the site, and I told him I'd take a look at it and see if there was anything that warranted further consideration for the design. Mostly focuses on the trucks from a traffic point of view. The design, this is the design that was done with VDOT. It shows a truck that's called, it's called a low-boy. I checked with VDOT, they can't tell me where this came from. That's been addressed now. This is what we went out and did, we went out and measured the actual car carriers. This is on West Broad Honda, and that's a completely different design vehicle than what had been used. And I understand from the exhibits I saw that the applicant has updated that. But those things are 81 feet long as opposed to that 53-foot vehicle that was originally used, and this shows you really how they compare in length. And so, we had done this demonstration, this was done by Balzer, they developed the design vehicle using the full length of the car carrier truck. And we had some issues with curbing in this area, where I can't tell from what I'm looking at on the exhibits that were presented, just how that works out. But at this point, with the adjustments that they have made, this is the remaining issue. This is the widening plan, the Stars program, Route 250, Route 288 plan. You can see the, this is the blow-up, and you can see right in here where this lane is going to be extended. So, the design now operates out of the third, what is the existing third lane, there's no right-turn lane here. It turns out of the third through lane into the site. Unless the site's modified in the future, that truck will be turning across the fourth lane. So, it'll be turning outside with an open lane on the right side, and you see the, you know, truck makes wide turns, don't pull up on the right side. Well, that is what the issue will be in the future. The design that they've shown looks like it fits pretty well, when the road is wide and it won't fit anymore. So, that's basically where this comes down to. The applicant has made some adjustments and further illustrations since the last meeting. Basically, the design doesn't accommodate the future, they're dedicating the right-of-way, but the pavement's not in place to have that truck turn out of what is the future fourth lane. And that'll still be pulling, that'll be turning out of a through lane, not a right-turn lane. Any questions?
There's no questions at this time, so.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thanks.
Good evening, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Larry Page, 1614 Genito Road. I am the owner of the Audi dealership down the street, concerned, I think I've sent the board some information on the traffic that generates at the Honda dealership that I've had for 45 years in Henrico County, and I have to defer that it's a high-traffic. And I'd like to know with, Chris, could you help me get the site plan back up?
This is just comments, sir.
Pardon?
This is just comments, period, this is not presentations. So, if you have comments for the board, please.
All right, I don't, all right, the area that's in the front of the building, the parking that's in the front of the building, if they have to adhere to the same standards that I had to at Audi, all that's going to be eliminated, there won't be. So, will that trigger a fourth parking deck? And then also, the buffer on Three Chop Road where we have the veterinary clinic, we're buddying right up to 288, and I had to put a 15-foot buffer in, not delete one in front of a $700,000 residence, community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Good evening. Rob Williamson, 2262 Wheatlands Drive, Manneken Sabbath. Just had a few concerns during the community meeting for this, for the parking deck, and I haven't heard that addressed here tonight. And that would be, if you look at the building, he showed an elevation from Broad Street Road at the location, it'd be uphill, but you come off of 288 downhill, et cetera, whether there's going to be a facade that'll block visuals of cars parked on basically the roof of the back of the building, anywhere along Broad Street on the Goochlin side. Also, lighting for night visuals also, we have night compliant requirements for lighting. I don't know if this parking deck is lit on the upper level, it's an open-air level, and whether or not that the downward lighting shining on windshields and shiny, brand-new paint is going to be another issue with the visual coming down the hill at night as far as what you see, if there are no facades on that upper level. And I also want to mention that to the west of this, toward the Tuckahoe Creek side, is a commercial lot that's currently wooded, that looks like it's going to provide a buffer until it's developed, which makes all the more important that there's some kind of barrier that prevents the line of sight from the road after that adjacent parcel is basically built, you know, built out. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. Any other comments? Seeing now, I'm going to close the public hearing. Would the applicant like to address anything that they heard?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be brief. I'm happy to have Carl Holgren come up and address the traffic issues if the board wishes them to.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Carl Holgren, I'm with Grove Slate Associates, we're a traffic engineering firm here in town. And we did the traffic study and helped the civil engineer with all the auto-turn exhibits. So, just to discuss the, is this the pointer? Yeah, here we go. So, the exhibit that's on the screen, the future widening of Broad Street is just in the planning phase right now. It's an unfunded project through the VDOT Stars program. now. It's an unfunded project through the VDOT Stars program, which typically looks at least six years into the future. So even if this project was funded and approved today, it would probably be six years before it would happen, and we're not even at that stage yet. So this is pretty far out. And in situations like this where a roadway is widened and there are existing commercial driveways on it, you know, those driveways would be, you know, basically reconstructed with the widening to mimic their, their current condition, to basically to restore the turning radii and so forth when the widening's in place. So I wouldn't expect that the truck would have to make a movement like this. They should be able to, you know, move into the yellow lane and make their turn into the site and circulate back out, just one lane, just 12 feet closer to the building. That, that should not, not be an issue. And again, just a reminder, even those large, you know, the 80-foot-long, 81-foot-long truck that we modeled, we're talking about 15 to 20 times a month. So less than one time a day would a truck need to, to turn in and circulate around.
Thank you.
I think that was, was there anything else?
I'll just ask a question following that.
Sure.
You made the obvious point, this is an unfunded Stars program, may happen, may not. But you made kind of a conclusory statement that when it does, if it does and when it does, you'll be able to adjust turn radius. But I think this diagram for a layman, non-engineer like me anyway, your, your choices are going to be to squeeze the entrance closer to the building. And I kind of got the impression during Mr. Routhamell's presentation that you all had adjusted the setback in a way that would give you the, the radius or radii that you need now to, in other words, you, you sound like if this gets approved, you're going to have to make adjustments. If you, if you have to squeeze that down, that's obviously going to change the turning radius. The other way is you can spread it out to maybe fix that. Have you planned that far? I got the impression from the presentation that you'd planned that far ahead, that if the Stars, if the Stars, if this improvement gets done, that you, you provided adequate turning radius for the larger vehicles to make the turn effectively. Is that?
Right.
It's a long question, but it is sort of a yes or no. Is this designed to work if Broad Street gets widened? I believe your presentation might be different than what we're looking at.
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Whatever site, it's like with site.
Yeah. So, so, Mr. Lumpkins, I think, you know, the point I was making is that they have, they have laid out the site from a, from a setback and sort of orientation standpoint to accommodate the, the future widening. Obviously, they have to design the site based on current conditions.
To work now.
Right. So they're, I anticipate there will be some adjustments that need to be made. Anytime a, sort of a site is widened and you put a new lane on a commercial strip, they're going to have to make some adjustments to those access points, you know, when that lane finally does come through. But, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it has to be designed for current conditions. If that makes.
It does, but I figured you, you were planning ahead because you are, you know enough to put the proposed property line that you pointed out to us. So I think if you know where that's coming, you're, all the engineering you've been doing, I think you'll know. We, I guess you're saying that we can make it work so that the same vehicles can successfully navigate even after the property line gets moved to where we see it's as proposed.
Correct. Absolutely correct.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I could just follow that same question. And they say there's no such thing as a stupid question, right? I'll ask it anyway. I'm going to put that to the test.
Why not just build it that way now? You know, why build it one way and then change it? Why not just build it to accommodate the future? Is that a stupid question?
I'm going to defer to the county's traffic expert.
So there's one piece of context as far as the Broad Street widening that I think is important, that the fourth, that yellow lane on the one exhibit involves moving a substantial vault that involves Henrico water coming into Goochlin and then taking into Centerville. That would be in that fourth lane. That would, it would be a substantial lift for any development project. We anticipate and currently have put in our estimates to take care of that as part of the road widening project.
I don't know if that was exactly what my question was. Help me, Austin. That, that feature that you're talking about, infrastructure, would be below beneath that expansion lane?
Correct. And it's, and currently it's unknown if that's traffic rated. So it's assumed we're going to have to move that.
So that would be, that, that would be a prerequisite to them actually designing and building it.
Not for the site.
For the future.
Yes, yes. But not as the site's currently laid out.
It was my question was why not just do it now? Well, if they did it now, this other thing would come into play.
Correct.
Which is a lot more dollar sign.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that in for context, that that's all, that would be in that fourth lane, and that would have to be moved as part of any Broad Street widening project.
So you're saying the underneath may not be traffic rated. We just don't know that yet.
It's an unknown because the variable hasn't been explored, but we are accounting for it.
But they're going to be driving trucks over it if they.
It, it would be moved if Broad Street is ever widened.
But they're going to be driving trucks over it in its place right now if it's parallel to Broad.
It would be in a grass median today, as it is now. It's off the, it's off the pavement now, within a right-of-way. It will remain that way.
It's not, it's not, I guess it's not parallel to Broad?
It is between Broad Street and the wood line leading to that pump station.
See, yeah, you've got the egress and regress, and this would be in between it off of the grass now.
Correct.
And if you widen it. So the ingress and egress proposed, ingress and egress is not going over this right?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Let me, so this is a great conversation. And at the end of the day, who's assuming the risk? It's the applicant, right? Like, let's say they build it this way, and then VDOT says, oh, we're going to do, we're going to do something different. It's the, it's the applicant that's taking that risk. Am I wrong?
It was a correct statement that, that Mr. Routhamell made, that they, they're designing it to today's edge of pavement. Whenever widening does come in across any residential or commercial facility, VDOT and the county have to look at operations. We can't hinder operations. So the aprons and the entrances would be modified to any degree to make sure that operations for any commercial, industrial, residential facility are, are kept in, in place.
So then the state?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so it could be.
So any modifications that need to be made to any entrance on any widening project are a part of that widening project.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank, thank you, thank you.
And I guess I would further point out that, you know, these, these are site plan issues. Like, you know, we, we adjusted our concept plan to show the wider entrances, not because we felt like we had to do that for a concept plan, but we just wanted to sort of be fully transparent that we started looking at these issues and we've made it wider. But, but we are getting, and this, I guess this is a downside for us in moving past the zoning issues and going into the site plan. We've sort of moved beyond, is this a good land use for this site? But obviously, things we've already started looking at, but will further refine during plan of development. So just a couple other comments. You know, I, I think that, you know, we've, we've had a lengthy process here. We met with the community. There's really no community opposition to this. You know, I know Mr. Page, you know, objects to it, and, and he is, in addition to the Audi dealership across the street, he has other Honda dealerships. I recognize he's a competitor of my client. We understand. He brought in Mr. Williamson, and then I guess Mr. Williamson was the only other person who spoke, had some questions. The parking deck, you know, if you have specific questions about that, we've really sort, you know, tried to, to incorporate the comments that we've gotten so far in, in what the facade should look like, how it should be laid out. The county has very rigorous requirements as far as lighting and landscaping, and we've, you know, put plans together which we'll be submitting. And that, that will go back and forth too, right? That, that will be part of the design review committee and the, and the plan of development process. So we feel like there's no real community citizen opposition to this. We think it's a great use, consistent with the, the county's comp plan, is consistent with the current zoning. We just need to amend a proffer and get a CUP for a site that's going to, you know, bring significant investment to the county, generate a lot of jobs for the county in a, in a heavily commercial, an already heavily commercial area. So we would, you know, respectfully request this board's approval tonight. We, we thank you for your time. If there are any remaining questions that have gone unanswered, just.
Again, I don't, I appreciate that. But I think what Mr. Williamson's question specifically was, is there a risk that this parking deck can bump up to four stories?
No, I don't think so. I.
We have minimum requirements that we have to maintain as well.
You want to come up? I'll let Bill answer that question.
It's not anticipated, no. There's minimum requirements. We have to meet the under 30 feet for everything in the, in the area as well. So again, we've been, we've been going through this extensively for over a year, making sure we're designing within the Goochlin standards accordingly. So as we sit here now, there's no intent to go to a fourth deck.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much. Was that a little sidebar on lighting, night, night compliance? Yeah, I was going to ask. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, board. Staff, do you want to come up? I've got a couple of questions. Ms. Natus? There was a question about the lighting that brought up. Would this be dark sky compliant?
Yes, sir. All outdoor lighting is required to be dark sky compliant per ordinance.
Right next to Henrico, okay. Do you have a question for staff? I did have a question. There were some revised proffers laid on our, on the dais when I came up.
Yes, sir.
The conceptual plan number two, help me understand, development of property for any permitted use other than automobile sales or repair shall be in general conformance, or repair has been stricken. It's my understanding that they're going to be repairing vehicles.
Well, it's actually service of vehicles, and the use under automobile sales includes service. But repair under our ordinance is like inoperable banged-up vehicles, and that's not what's allowed. This is for automobile service, which is an accessory use.
It won't be a collision.
But, yes.
Okay, I'm asking the question. I just want to assure the applicant.
So the way that it's intended to function legally is for more of a preventative maintenance? You know, your vehicle inspections, oil changes, no auto-body collision work?
So if I was, say, driving, supervisor on the county in my Honda, and I ripped off a fender, I couldn't go there to get it fixed?
That's not the intended use.
Hypothetically, so, okay, I didn't, I thought they'd be able to get it full service there. Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Chair, there was an issue brought up about screening the top deck. Where does that stand? Any potential screening for the top deck?
Top deck of the parking deck?
Garage, yeah.
That would be decided and determined through the design review committee once we receive a plan of development, which the applicant is very, very close to submitting a full plan of development should the case move forward through you all this evening. The design review committee would have that discussion, and it's something staff would prepare and review and analyze in advance and provide a staff report for.
I had some follow-ups, but if you want to stay on this point. I did. Okay, go. So can you talk a little bit about this process? Because this one's a little different than most of the cases that I've, I've heard where we have had plans of development. So there's going to be a lot that's going to be decided by designer. I keep hearing that. How is that, how is that arbitrated? Like, let's say they get to an impasse. How does that work? Just talk about the process from here, plan of development, design review, what happens?
Thank you. Yes, sir. So while it goes through the plan of development review, once we start getting the conceptions and the specifics for the building, we will also work to schedule a design review committee meeting, at which time they start to discuss things such as building materials, look and feel as this is an overlay district, which just generally comes with some more conformance requirements that are already existing in county code. There's prob, there's multiple overlay districts within the county. For instance, we have one off of Route 6 where even our fire station adheres to the overlay district requirements. And we do as a county as well with regards to our East Goochlin pump station and some other things with how they're constructed and built.
Sure. So what if there's disagreement?
There is a arbitration process. I will let our community development director, Ms. Sherry, better answer that for you.
Okay. And then as well, sorry, I'm jumping into Mr. Peterson, but as well, Mr. Page's question about the parking standards that he had to conform to, will they be similar? How does that get managed? So two questions. If there's an impasse with the design review, how's that, how's that handled? And then what is the, addressing Mr. Page's concern about the parking standards?
Mr. Spinhauer, the certificate of approval is part of the POD process. If they put in their application for conformance, they will, if they don't meet all the standards, they have to go to the design review committee. The design review committee will hear the application. Staff will present that which is not consistent. They will hear on the applicant's side why it should be approved. The design review committee can impose conditions and actually approve it. If the applicant is not happy with that approval, there is an appeal process, and that would come to the board of supervisors. And I'm sorry, can you repeat the second question?
I'm sure we'll come to that. Mr. Page mentioned when they, they were going through their process, there was conditions on the parking, and I think the question was, will they need to maintain the same standards?
So again, as presented in the conceptual plan, there's more than a double row of parking. So that would be something that would be brought to the design review committee. And so that ultimately, the answer to that is up to them.
But it will be addressed.
It will be addressed, correct.
Correct. And, and just to reiterate, should there be an instance where there is a conformance issue with the design standards of the overlay district and the design review committee and the applicant aren't able to reach an agreement, it does come back to the board of supervisors.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Peterson, I hijacked some of your time there. So I will yield back.
I think you touched on most of the things. I did want to circle back to Mr. Page because he raised two or three different issues. One was that some of the parking places would have to disappear if the same standards were imposed, and I think that's what you were touching on as well. And then, of course, we already touched on the lighting, the screening of the upper deck, and then the egress, regress, and the relocation. So I think most, you've touched on most of the things I was going to raise. So, well done. Thank you.
Ms. Last call.
Okay, so I ask again, what is the definition of an automobile versus a motor vehicle?
A motor vehicle is over 10,000 pounds. A automobile, I will let Ms. McGee.
Like a private passenger vehicle.
That is a personal-use passenger vehicle.
So where, so the intent is to sell vehicles here beyond private passenger vehicles?
No, the intent is to serve, to sell personal-use vehicles, because they're selling automobiles, not motor vehicles.
The proffer says motor vehicle.
Sorry. I don't have it.
It says automobile sales, motor vehicle sales, accessory also may include service of these types of vehicles within an enclosed building. This was what was presented to us today.
Ms. Last call. We actually did, this may be something the applicant is willing to address. Between the planning commission and now, we actually asked them to strike the industrial truck sales and some of those other languages.
Right, yes.
But we hadn't gone so far as to focus on motor vehicle. They did willingly strike all that other stuff, and it, and it's, the discussion was around not having bigger typed vehicles. So that may be something the applicant's willing to do. But it was an oversight on our behalf, and we weren't discussing motor vehicle as well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying I'm objecting to it. I just don't know, I want to understand what it is we're proving. That's all.
They did strike the watercraft and some other specific vehicles, but it does allow for larger vehicle sales. You are correct in that question and asking that.
And what are we talking about here?
So, Mr. Wong informs me, there are no Hondas over 10,000 pounds. I think when we were going back and forth with the county on this, you know, we took the language straight out of the ordinance, the way that the ordinance reads initially. And then, you know, they asked us to strike more motorcraft and motorcycles and industrial uses. And, you know, some of the, you know, some of the terminology, you know, same thing with the repair. You know, when they asked us to strike the repair, we said, wait a second. I mean, we repair cars. But when you dig into the weeds of the ordinance, you know, it's, we're not doing a body shop, you know, so, and service was ancillary to the, to the permitted use, so we struck repair. You know, automobile, motor vehicle, you know, you go to the motor vehicle bureau, like, we just, that was just the. we just, that was just the, sort of the thought that we're striking all the industrial, the heavier uses, but no, there is no Honda over 10,000 pounds.
Okay, and that's fine. Yeah.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, I just want to...
Well, I think you bring up a good point, because we're not approving a Honda dealership. We're approving the use.
That's true.
So...
That's true. Yeah, it could be any...
Right. So just because the Hondas are, we're not approving that, we're approving that, right now we're saying in this that motor vehicle sales could occur if this moves ordinance through.
And Ms. Rothermell, you might not have been aware, as we were going back and forth the language, again, I was so focused on industrial truck sales, I didn't get to everyone. But as written, under our ordinance, motor vehicle would include vehicles over 10,000 pounds. Is that what you wish to continue to have in the proffer?
No, we have no intention of selling anything over 10,000.
Okay, so it would be acceptable to you if the proffer's amended to exclude the word motor vehicle from the 1A use?
Correct. Thanks, Ms. McGee.
Not to get too specific on that, but I believe the new Hummer with the oversized battery pack is approaching 10,000. So it's, it's a real, I mean, it's out there, so. And who knows, because batteries weigh a lot more than...
And Hondas sell the jets, too.
Mr. Vodders? Those won't be sold at this...
Mr. Vodders?
So there are three comments I'd like to make. First, we just had the Centerville deferral and amendment process, and one thing it brought to light was, almost every single comment made said, "We don't deny that growth will happen in Goochlin County. We just want to see it done right." This is exactly the right type of growth that we should want as a county. This is at the Henrico-Goochlin border. This is an industrial/commercial area. This is a good project. So for the, you know, all the comments we've received, one of the things that I can say is, the citizens put that comment out there. I'm not making that comment on my own. I'm saying this is where we'd like to see it happen. Second, we have a really good steward in this applicant. For over 10 months, I've known about this potential project with someone reaching out and his entire team saying, "This is something that we're considering. This is in your district. How do we go about doing this?" That's the type of communication and applicant that we want to see in everything in this county. I would hope that we can take a, you know, take Mr. Wong's approach and repeat it over and over and over again, and have good stewards in our business partners. And finally, we're talking about transportation. We can't put good business partners behind hypotheticals. I appreciate VDOT and all the work we do with them, but we're not going to put a project behind a maybe something happens on Broad Street Road when we have a good commercial business partner that wants to do a project. And so I just, to me, those are three of the points that I see standing out in this application and why I think, you know, I hope we support it.
So are you...
No, it's not a motion yet.
It could be.
Well, there we go. Mr. Chairman, I move the board approved proffer amendment, RZ 2023-8 at 12501 Broad Street Road with the amendment of no vehicles over 10,000 pounds being on site.
And that would be to strike the words motor vehicle from proffer 1A, as agreed to by the applicant at the...
Ms. McGee, I think I need to all be as amended because since we got new proffers today.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. And the proffers listed on the page titled revised proffers.
Thank you, Mr. Vodders. You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Ms. Laskett?
Just to be, Mr. Vodder, so the amendments on this page that we were handed tonight, with the exception of striking through motor vehicles, is that correct?
With the addition of... All right.
Right.
How do we legally do that, to just say the 10,000 pound rule?
No, it was already set.
Okay, great. Right, motion and second. There you go.
Mr. Peterson?
Mr. Chair, I understood all the comments that were made by Mr. Vodder's about the applicant himself and the process he's gone through and being a good community partner and whatnot. I just wanted to say that, you know, that Mr. Page similarly went through a very good process, interactive process, back and forth, working together, and has been a great neighbor and business in Goochlin. And I understand there's some competitive element here, but I wanted to reiterate that we've got really two auto dealerships that have gone through a very similar process, and they've done it in a way that we, it was very professional, and we hope a lot of folks can learn from that. So just wanted to mention that.
Agreed, and thank you for pointing that out.
Any other comments? The only other one I would make is that typically I would not be a fan of reducing buffers. However, each piece of property is unique, and when I look to the east, I don't see any buffers at all. So there was no thought to shield the businesses of Goochlin County. So I can get more comfortable with that. That being said, roll call vote. Mr. Vodders?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Laskett?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindhauer?
Yes.
Okay, that's item number one. Now we need to move into the conditional use permit.
There's no separate presentation for that?
Correct, correct. We're just looking for a motion and a vote.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant conditional use permits, CUP 2023-10 for automobile sales and service at 12501 Broad Street Road, subject to the imposed conditions as presented.
Second.
Thank you.
Just as a clarification, Mr. Chair, the as presented is the amended proffer list.
The proffer was in the rezoning. This is the conditions that are in your packet. They have not been changed since the packet.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson, for the clarification. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Vodders?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Laskett?
Yes.
Mr. Lumpkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindhauer?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Your applications are approved. Right now, the board will adjourn to a mere 22 hours from now for our special meeting on the Centerville Small Area Plan, and then to our regular business meeting on November 1st. We adjourn.